...what they believe. I would pray that our City Hall doesn't elevate one particular race, nationality, gender identity, sexual orientation, faith or creed above or below another. I would pray that our City Hall is a public institution where all residents and groups are equal with one another, where no resident is represented differently than another, where no one feels alienated. I would pray that if council meetings are to start with a prayer, that absolutely everyone is equitably represented, not just in theory but in practice. And if that isn't happening, the practice of denominational prayer at City Hall is simply discontinued. Amen. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Matt. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Bob. I like your shirt.
Thank you. Well, thanks. And for those present and who may be watching elsewhere, this is the payoff of the great cup game. There was a shirt prepared in Tiger Cat colors with Mayor Fugere's name on the back, and that will probably stay in the box in Regina, whereas I have had to wear the shirt and fly the flag, you know, in front of City Hall on several masts that are up. One of them is the Saskatchewan Rough Rider flag. And if only we had been able to complete a few more passes, maybe Mayor Fugere would have had to wear it. But I'll put on my chain of office now that I've done that.
(inaudible)
No, I can't. I agreed I would wear this shirt. But I will throw a forward pass completed to Counselor Farr. Makes the ding drop. I know I should have told you. Enter that into evidence. What's the old line? You eat with those hands? Thanks, Counselor. In addition to, of course, the Saskatchewan Rough Rider flag, everyone will notice that our City Hall Canadian flag is at half mast in honor and respect of the Lake Nelson Mandela. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live with the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording the meeting. And Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is one added communication this evening, 5-7 correspondence from the Ministry of the Environment respecting the application of 958160 Ontario Limited, operating its daily waste oil services for increase of waste disposal site service area. Suggested recommendation is to be received and referred to the Acting General Manager of Planning and Economic Development for a report to the Planning Committee. There is one added motion, correction to an omission from the GIC report from the last council, noted as 7-4. There are three added notices of motions. 8-1 from Counsel Ferguson, request for amendment to the Police Services Act. 8-2 Counsel Farr regarding 18 to 22 and 24 to 28 King Street East. And Counselor 8-3 Counsel Whitehead regarding an amendment to the Town of Ancaster OP and zoning by law for lands municipally known as 1117 Garner Road East.
All right. A motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended. Counsel Pearson, Counsel Johnson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Declarations of interest, members of council, any declarations? And hearing none. We have a couple of great ceremonial activities as we approach the Christmas season. The Winona Peach Festival, Czech presentation, and my pleasure now to invite Linda Schuker, the president of the Winona Peach Festival, to the podium.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I don't see Linda here, so maybe if we can wait until after the...
I didn't see her here.
Maybe it's the weather. Stony Creek was pretty bad.
Yeah.
Stagecoach is late, so if we want to put that here, please.
We'll hold that up. Sorry, I missed that. Okay. But I'm pretty sure the police are here.
Yeah.
And so, in recognition of a remarkable police service that has been honored by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, I'd like to call now our chief, Glenn DeCare, to the podium to announce these remarkable achievements. Chief DeCare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and ladies and gentlemen, and the viewers at home. It takes an extraordinary effort of our team every day so that our citizens can enjoy what is just an ordinary day. In the last several months, the Hamilton Police Service has been awarded provincial, national, and international awards, and today. While it is the members of the service that have received the awards, they are received on behalf of our citizens that we serve in public safety every single day. Our Victim Services Program, caring for those directly impacted by criminal behavior, have received the Provincial Ontario Women in Law Enforcement Award, the International Association of Women in Policing Award, and the International Association of Chiefs of Police Award recently that was presented in Philadelphia. And if I could ask to stand to be recognized, please, Susan Double and Shaz Valani from Victim Services, and I recognize them for their leadership. And also, all of the Victim Services folks that are here today, please stand to be recognized. Our community policing and crime prevention strategies in place at the Hamilton Police Service, which include our historic Neighborhood Safety Project and now the Action Crime Reduction Strategy, including the Social Navigator Project, was a finalist in both the international competitions for a prestigious award from Motorola, referenced as the Weber Sevia Award, and the Herman Goldstein Problem-Oriented Policing Award. While being finalists in those categories, they actually won the International Association of Chiefs of Police Award. The national competition was very tough, however, the Hamilton Police Service received the Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police Award for excellence in emergency preparedness. And again, at the provincial level, the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police, the service was selected and recognized for the Ontario Media Relations Network Committee for the Social Media Award under the stewardship of... And please stand Catherine Martin. In front of you, councilors, and just behind those of you on this side of the horseshoe, we have the hardware that is displayed on the table just at the bottom of the stairs. And this is the hardware that we have accepted on behalf of our board, on behalf of this council, and on behalf of the great citizens of Hamilton. But what is more important than the awards that sit here on the table is what is behind this. And it's the hearts of the members and the dedication professionalism and the excellence that they deliver in policing services every day. So as a result of providing that service, what is the impact? The impact has been, Stats Canada report a few months ago released, that an outstanding 19% decrease in violent crime has taken place in the city of Hamilton. This is the second greatest violent crime decrease in the single greatest violent crime decrease in the entire nation, and that belongs right here to Hamilton. What we also know is that these community-based programs that we are being recognized for are a result of high performance, not just the men and women of the Hamilton Police Service, but of all of our partners and our community organizations that support us, which include the city of Hamilton. At a recent council meeting, it was Counselor Marula who applauded the efforts of Counselor Ferguson for bringing positive attention to the city of Hamilton for the EpiPen project. And in 2013, the Hamilton Police Service has brought positive provincial, national, and international attention to Hamilton. Our business practices, service delivery, and excellence is based on evidence-based best practices. We are leaders in domestic violence and sexual assault, and our models for others in the province. And our Victim Services Support Program and Crime Prevention lead in the industry. I want to acknowledge from the city of Hamilton, and if I could ask them to please stand, Mr. Neil Everson, Glenn Norton, Paul Johnson. And I want to thank each of you for the work that you have done in supporting us. And your work is paying off in great dividends, and I want to recognize the people who deliver the work that you have supported and has been supported by this council through your funding. And that is the work of our first Social Navigator, Kim Walker, and now performing that role is also Pat O'Neil. Thank you very much for your work. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of Deputy Chief Gert, Deputy Chief Linderts, the entire command staff, I want to thank each of you for the support that you provide to the Hamilton Police Service each and every day. As I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, it takes an extraordinary team effort so the city can have an ordinary day, and that includes everyone around this table. Thank you very much.
Chief, on behalf of all of us around the council table, thank you so much for leading this great organization. We're so proud of our Hamilton Police Service. Those tokens of our effectiveness and adequacy are really remarkable, and we are now on the international stage as a result of the presentations that were made in Philadelphia. Couldn't be prouder. Thank you so much for all you've contributed. Thank you. Just before we continue on with our meeting, it saddens me to inform you, and you might well have been aware already, that Mike Passarelli passed away on November 29th after a brief but courageous fight with cancer. Mike started as a Public Health Inspector with Public Health Services in 1985, and throughout his career, he became known for his calm and gentle demeanor, but could be tough as nails when needed. He was a respected mentor to many Public Health Inspectors over the years and a great colleague to many across all of Public Health Services. Mike and his wife Penny have three daughters, Angela, Christine, and Julia. And our heartfelt condolences go out to them on the loss of a great public servant, Michael Passarelli. Now, the ceremonial activities are concluded. Members of council, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 27th council meeting as presented. Counsel Johnson, Counsel Pearson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Council members, communications 5-1 through 5-7, we'll take individually. First, we have email correspondence from Matthew Langerlié, Executive Officer of Hamilton Home Builders Association. The recommendation is that we receive this and refer it to the Acting General Manager of the Planning and Economic Development Committee for a report back to the Planning Committee. Move that. Ferguson, Pearson, all in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Email correspondence from Rodney and Anita Vermulon and the children. Yes, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you. This is regarding the application for a church in Glambrak. There are three items of correspondence. I'm looking at...
Two and three.
Two and three as well. Three and four, I should say.
Four, right.
Four and five, sorry. I'd like to refer those to our planner, Peter DeLulio, who's on this file, so he can keep it with the staff report, please.
So we'll move 5-2, 3, 4, and 5 consecutively.
Well, I think 5-2, 5-4, and 5-5.
Okay.
And 5-3 is a different item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
No worries.
So on those three, moved in second, and all in favor of receiving it. We're referring to the Acting Manager of the Planning and Economic Development to Mrs. Prale. Okay. So then we have 5-3. Counsel Pearson, do you want to speak to that?
Again, sir, I'd like to refer this to Acting Manager of Planning and Economic. This is regarding the Panatty Winona Walmart. It's just comments on the traffic. Leanne Conliff is on that file.
Right.
So I'd like to have that for her file as well, please.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Pearson, all in favor? That's Carrie. Counsel Powers.
Could I just ask a question through you, Clerk, with regards to...
Clerk, please.
So if we receive a piece of correspondence, does it just go into the city's records, or does this correspondence automatically go onto the Planning Department so that it would form... I just want to help us as to we... With regards to process, please, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Charles.
Mr. Mayor, receiving an item is to acknowledge it as part of the official record. If you want an item to formally go to a department, then we should receive that direction.
All right. And so, we have that moved in second, and all in favor. I believe that we carried that. So we go to 5-6 now. Move to receive the status update report, seconded by Ferguson, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. Correspondence from Gabriella Sadowska. Moved by Whitehead, seconded by Duval, all in favor. That's Carrie. And of course, there's a recommendation there that we'll follow. So Counsel Johnson, a motion, please, on the communications. You should have a motion before you to...
At the communications, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Lloyd Ferguson, he signed it and everything, that council communications 5.1 through 5.7 be approved as amended.
All in favor. Counsel Jackson, a motion, please, to move into committee of the whole for consideration of the committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move this. Moved by myself and seconded by Ward 7 Counselor Scott DeVal, that council move into committee of the whole for consideration of all the committee reports.
And so, all in favor? I'll ask the deputy mayor now to take over the podium on our final council meeting before the Christmas break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I need a motion from our committee, please, to waive the rules so we can bring our General Issues Committee meeting that we just had today to the forefront so we can approve that today. Counsel Whitehead, Counsel McCady, all those in favor? Carrie, now I need, if you can please refer to 610 on item 1. I'm sorry?
Chair, I'm sorry. I know that the request was to bring it ahead, but Counsel Marula is just tied up a little bit right now. He'll be here any moment. If we can just hold off until he arrives, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Well, we've already waived the rules to bring it forward, so we'll just put it off until we can get to that time.
Wonderful.
Thank you. No worries. The general... Oh, now we're on 62, thank you. The General Issues Committee presents Report 13025 and respectfully recommends item 1. Item 2. Item 3. Counsel Jackson, may I have a motion on the report, please?
You may, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself and once again seconded by Ward 7 Counselor Scott DeVal, that Report 13-018(c) of the GIC be received for information.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carrie, any opposed? 6.3 for General Issues Committee present Report 1... 6.2. Apologies. The General Issues Committee represents Report 13-018(c) for information. Counsel Jackson, may I have a motion on that report, please?
Madam Deputy Mayor, you may. Moved by myself, seconded again by Ward 7 Counselor Scott DeVal, that this GIC report be adopted and received.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. 6.3. The Public Works Committee presents Report 13-015 and respectfully recommends item 1. Counsel Jackson, item 1.
Madam Deputy Mayor, just want to publicly thank the leadership of Counsel Lloyd Ferguson, who guided us through a very difficult year in 2013 as head of Public Works. And with all of his experience and talent and background, he was perfectly suited to be the chairman of Public Works and always kept our meetings focused and on target and worked extremely well with community and staff, along with the committee, to hopefully bring a lot of successes to the table. I just want to thank him at the year end. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. So item 1. Item 2. Item 3. Item 4. Item 5. Item 6. Item 7. Item 8. Item 9. Item 9. Counsel Clerk and then Pearson. Counsel Clerk. Counsel Pearson, then Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Appreciate that. And I certainly would be remiss if we let this slip by and not publicly mention. This is the report that dealt with the trash tag system and distribution method for 2014. This is our garbage tags, and I know I'm not on PW, but I'm chair of the Solid Waste Management Subcommittee. And it is good news, so residents can look forward to in the new year. No changes to the waste program. Phew! I know everybody's happy with that, so there's been no changes. The only thing that's going to change is the color of your tags. They will be a bright green next year, and they will again be mailing out 12 tags as they did this year, with an additional 14 that can be received through the year to give a full complement of 26 that are potentially available to every homeowner in this city. And I'm pleased to say that as of the point of the report being done in 2013, there was only 6,600 residents that requested extra tags, the extra allotment that could be provided. So that's only 4% of our population. So it's great news, and I think it would be that we need to commend the residents at 96% success rate with regards to our one-bag limit and our tags system. And this is superb work by our residents because it is their work. They're doing this. And it sends... I want to extend kudos to all of them because the end of the day is the landfill that is being preserved. And with our Leaf and Yard Waste Program now being unlimited and our bulk pickup being weekly, we certainly have been able to meet pretty well all the needs of the residents of this city. And I mean, there may be a few glitches once in a while, but we do our very best, and I want to commend staff for listening every time we, you know, bring forward new information, new suggestions, changes, et cetera, to try and accommodate as best we can. So it's a good news, and I just wanted to be sure the public was aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pearson. Counsel Powers? No, Counsel Pasuta.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor Johnson. And on this item 2, the trash tag, last time we had issues about getting the tags out to the rural residents, particularly the addresses that refer back to, they go to Wellington County, so Pushlins, Cambridge, over to Waterloo County, there were some issues, even, I can say that I do live in Counsel Partridge, who's Ward 9, never got any trash tags because it comes from Halt, and our address is actually a Halt address. So I think I've heard talk that we're going to improve upon that. Hopefully, that'll happen. Even as of this day, there's people out there that never did get their trash tags noticed. Hopefully, we can correct that. So looking forward to that, but it would be nice if they'd be mailed, but we'll try it one more time this year.
Thank you, Counsel Pasuta. Counsel Jackson.
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, I just want to continue to support the trash tag system. It's been a little under a year, I believe, in place now as part of the seven-year contract for waste collection. In my opinion, it's been a success already on two fronts. I know a number of residents in my ward have expressed the appreciation of the convenience of the trash tags for that particular weekend when they're cleaning out the garage or the shed, instead of having to take the garbage up to the community recycling center on Kilbride and being charged a user fee to dump the extra household garbage. They now with the trash tags for that once in a while they need to use it, the convenience of it, they could put it out front, and it's part of the taxes overall they pay. So that's been a convenience. Secondly, on the illegal dumping issue, we've had interim reports from municipal law enforcement on this matter, and I believe the trash tags are already making an impact. It's small, it's measurable, but it's going in the right direction in terms of reducing. I can tell you through my office, the number of calls for illegal dumping or emails has declined measurably. And so I think that this has been a double benefit in terms of the trash tags, both the convenience and the illegal dumping issues that it's rectifying in the long run. I know there's concern that our overall waste diversion rate, that is still kind of hovering, I believe, between 45 and 50% to the overall target. That amalgamation started out around 65%, Madam Deputy Mayor. I still believe we're going in the right direction with this most more balanced approach and not forgetting about the downside of the former one-bag policy. And I hope in the new year, I hope General Manager Gerry Davis and the Waste Division will hopefully bring us an update on how the entire program of recycling green carts has rolled out with 1,100 apartment buildings as well as the commercial areas, because there was a deficiency in terms of the single-family homeowner being way ahead of those other two particular areas, of the multi-res and the commercial areas, from helping to elevate the waste diversion rate to get us towards our overall goal of 65%. So I'm hoping in the early in the new year, we'll hear exactly how these recycling programs are being rolled out completely and with results and outcomes, as well through the apartments and the commercial areas. I strongly support the 26 bags carrying forward next year. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Ferguson.
Just a couple of points. As Counsel Pearson said, there's been very little uptake on the tags, 4%, which is a very... I think it's smaller than what we anticipated. People asking for additional tags. But the point to remember is that our calls are down, as Counsel Jackson said, our calls into for illegal dumping are down. We can't measure the dollar value yet because we haven't got to year end, but we'll be reporting that sometime in the new year through Public Works. And the biggest complaint I had in my constituency, and I think a lot of other councilors who are on the Public Works Committee experience this, is that people are asserting that they didn't receive the trash tags. And what happened when they went out in the mail, they were in what looked like coupon section or, you know, ads. And so, it would go directly into the blue bin. This year, it'll be an official-looking envelope that'll draw the reader's attention to it to encourage them to open it up, to try to eliminate some of those problems. But the most important thing is, we give staff very clear instructions, no more changes. And it was... They're almost abusing us with all these changes we had to try to explain to our community. So there's no changes this year, and what we've done now seems to be working quite well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson. Counsel Partridge. Thank you. Counsel Clerk.
Can I just clarify? It indicates in the report that they're going to be mailed by Canada Post. I'm assuming that wasn't done last year.
Gerry Davis.
Through the chair, we did use Canada Post, the very cheapest rate, and that's where we had issues with some not being... Some were delivered outside the jurisdiction of the city because postal code areas don't match municipal boundaries. So we used the very cheapest rate of Canada Post mail. What we're doing this year, we're doing this, we're going to use the same format, but we're putting it in an envelope that is clearer. And all the areas last year at Counsel Pasuta indicated, there's some up in Ward 11, we'll ensure that the residents get them. So we are using the same mail-out format, a better envelope, and we know the problem areas where we can correct it. And, you know, if we have to hand-deliver those ones, we will.
Have it confirmed from Canada Post that they're doing the delivery that is not being sent out to a third-party delivery? Because in my ward, about 20% didn't receive them because they don't have mailboxes. They have superboxes. They were delivered to the houses into the mailboxes, and they don't have one. And they never got delivered to the superboxes. That was the issue with Canada Post, and I want to make sure that Canada Post is going to deliver them to both the superboxes and the homes.
That's correct.
Mr. Davis.
That's how it'll be done this year. Okay.
Counsel Clerk.
And with regards to the tag program, I always thought it was a great program, and I was very hopeful that we would see a significant drop-off in illegal dumping, and it has transpired. And I think next year, we'll be able to make some other changes because this program has worked so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clerk. So on item 9, please. Carrie, item 10. Counsel Ferguson, I understand you have an amendment on item 11.
Yes, I do, Chairman. As before you, it's a housekeeping issue, and it's adding a Section D which allows any contracts to be reviewed by and to the satisfaction of the city solicitor. So it's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Powers.
Thank you. All those in favor? Carrie, item 12. Counsel Clerk.
On item 11, that was the amendment to item 11. I wanted to ask a question about item 11 specifically. In the agreement, I had a chance to review the agreement. It talks about MetroLink's being able to charge a participation fee to anyone who's a part of the procurement process. Although in the same breath, it says they don't plan to charge it, it's indicated in two sections of the agreement that where, if we sign this, we're agreeing to allow them to charge us a fee to participate in the purchase of any of the buses or trains. And I have real concerns about that, especially when it's not... Doesn't indicate what that fee is, and it's nonsense to even be charged a fee. So I'd like Mr. Davis and Mr. Murray to comment whether or not we can actually indicate that we're not... We have a real issue with being charged to participate.
Through the chair, I'll find out what that participation fee is. I don't have the background with me of why they're charging it. I imagine, just off the top of my head, is that because we're doing the centralized procurement, but I can get the information and report back to committee.
It says in the report on page 8 of the document, the contract, that the parties acknowledge that MetroLink's current policy is not to charge a participation fee. However, and it goes on to indicate that they can make the decision to charge us, and it's in two other sections of the contract. So I'm just concerned that we're agreeing to that in advance when... It's ridiculous. The province pays the taxes, MetroLink's is paid by the province, we pay... We receive the taxes from property taxes, so both sides, it's property taxes paying to fund the procurement of the buses, and now MetroLink says they're going to charge us a fee, or that we're agreeing that we will allow them to charge a fee. So I really have concerns about that, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier, but I was... I was trying to get more information about it and I really couldn't get any more information about it. I'm just saying, it is what it is. So I raise it today. We really should be pushing back on that, Mr. Murray.
Well, I, Madam Chair, apologize for not asking these questions in the bottom. I was given some assurance about what this means and it's merely just housekeeping. Based on what Councilor Clark has said, does this mean that we're agreeing to something that we've already rejected, which is the funding tools? That the extra charge, a hundred million dollars a year in extra gas, five cents a liter, parking surcharges, blah, 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 which our, Mike Zagarick told us would put us in a difficult position in terms of competition with neighboring areas that don't have those extra fees. So I wish someone would make that clear to me, that that's not the toolbox. Now, we, it may get imposed on us anyway, but we're in a strange position now of having approved the motion that we do not accept the funding tools, whether they're going to be imposed or not. And now agreeing to some sort of a fee which may in fact be the funding tools. So can anyone assure me that that's not the funding tools?
Through the Chair, this, this report deals with the procurement for pricing of buses and other materials. This isn't the funding agreement that was dealt with. We've been doing this with Metrolinks since two thousand and eight for, it's a cooperative purchasing process. So it has nothing to do with what councils passed with respect to the funding. This is a separate agreement with Metrolinks. We buy our buses jointly with all the other municipalities. That's what we're doing with this one here.
So, Councilor, Mayor, are you? So Councilor Ferguson?
Yeah, first of all, the part I referenced about housekeeping was for the amendment, which was a section to have the city solicitor review it and that's what we approved. The part about this potential fee is the main motion now, which is what we're discussing. So through you, Madam Chairman, to Gerry. Gerry, do you think there'd be any issue? Just to give everybody's comfort level, we passed an amendment that the part dealing with a potential new fee be struck?
The Chair, I don't, I don't know the time sensitivity. My preference would be to table it and let us go back and get you the information so we have all the details for you.
I'd be happy to move that, Madam Chairman.
Okay, I need to go to the Clerk now. We've already passed it, so please, Clerk, walk us through. I thought we, the amendment's okay. So Clerk, we've got a motion on the table right now to table the rest?
Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you. Is it to table in council or do you wish to refer back to the Public Works Committee?
I'll move to the mover here. Let's look to the...
I refer back to Public Works.
Refer it back to Public Works? And I've got a yes over here, so first, seconded by Councilor Clark? No?
I'm fine with seconding, but I want to just point out the exact clauses that we don't lose them.
Okay, I've got a tabling here, so do you want to talk to the tabling or you're...
I'm not speaking to the, I'm simply indicating that the clause is two-point-one I in the agreement and four-point-nine in the agreement. That deals with the participation fee that we could pay or could be asked to pay for purchasing eight-meter, nine-meter, twelve-meter, and eighteen-meter transit buses. It's a surcharge that they're allowing themselves to charge.
So this is the direction to staff and now we have a tabling motion to send this back to Public Works, correct? Moved by Councilor Ferguson, seconded by Councilor Powers. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so to number twelve, please. Carried? Oh, Councilor Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At Public Works, I did, or sorry, yeah, Public Works, I did raise some concerns in regards to the dollars I have since I made some calls and I want to thank staff. So I will be supporting this as part of the due diligence in providing the services to those households and potential development.
Thank you. So that was item twelve. Item thirteen. Item fourteen. Councilor Ferguson, may I have a motion on the report, please?
You sure may. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Russ Powers. That the fifteen report of the Public Works Committee be adopted as amended and the information section received.
Thank you. All those in favor? So now, now I, we already had a motion to waive the rules to allow six-point-ten to come forward. I need another motion to move this report to this slot right now instead of waiting till six-ten. Mayor Bettina, Councilor Pearson, all those in favor? Thank you. The General Issues Committee presents its twenty-seventh report for two thousand and thirteen and respectfully recommends number one.
Land purchase first.
Councilor Morelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take this opportunity, first of all, apologize for the lack of breath coming in. That's one of my rebuilds and so I'm more than just honored and overwhelmed actually to be here today and for many of you that know me well, I don't get overwhelmed with too much. But first of all, I want to just take this opportunity to thank the citizens of the whole city of Hamilton and obviously the representation that sits in place on their behalf. And this project obviously is one that I received total support for over a number of years and clearly through the representation, although I must say, there isn't one person around this table that hasn't come to the forefront to assist with the continuous evolution of this project and certainly will probably, in my future visions, continue to see it come to total fruition. You know, one of the things that it represents is a renaissance, a continued renaissance though. I think it's attributed to you as a council. You know, we're just driving down Main Street the other day and we saw obviously the cranes and whatever, and the cranes are one symbol, but this community is making leaps and bounds moving forward. You know, though, you know, this job often is very difficult and you have to sort of take it and bear with it. I must say that I need to salute this council as another one that has bared down and worked through it and come up with this, this, this project which has been long overdue. I've certainly spent my almost whole career here and certainly dedicated to seeing this come to fruition and certainly to see this arrangement forged by community and with the end result being a facility that will respond not only to the communities of this city at large, but in the immediate area of the precinct and that's Ward Three. I must say to you, this represents also a clear message that we are not just trying to build a first-class Canadian football facility, but this is going to be a first-class Canadian neighborhood facility which all, which we are working towards in all our neighborhoods. And again, this is another, will be another example of where we can achieve that with this, this new, this new facility, which will be part of the replacement, obviously, of Brian Timmons' one facility. But certainly it will also include the senior center and new soccer facilities and baseball. And for those that have been working with our neighborhood groups, Paul Johnson, I just want to convey to both them and to the community again at large, in the immediate area, the So Sherman Neighborhood Hub group who worked so hard to see this come about, Bob Lively who's worked so hard with both hockey and, 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 and baseball there. I can tell you that they need to know that we remain as a community and certainly as a council. And I again want to salute my council. I committed and dedicated to the, to the responding of needs in the inner city and certainly doing it on an organized basis. There's been a considerable contribution, as I said earlier, by a number of people around this table and certainly I want to thank my, not only each and every one of you, but more specifically my inner-city colleagues who recognize that it will respond to the largest part to that group and obviously expand out throughout the area. And certainly those of you also know that, you know, the Councilor Marula in Collins and right here has stood very, very much along with all of you in support of not only supporting this project like you all have, but getting me through when, when, you know, a substantial amount of work had been done, but it needed to be closed. And certainly we were able to work out of my facilities at home here and they were able to give more importantly, time, not just to me, but to the people of this community. So with those comments, Mr., Mr. Chairman, I want to salute also the people of Ward Three. This has been a long time coming for you. I assure you that I will continue to work to see that this facility is built in a fashion that responds to your needs. And one of the ways, I know one of the questions I'd like you to receive will be, will we continue our planning as we did with Paul Johnson in the first phases? And I can tell you, each and every phase of this project, including everything from Brian Timmons to Jimmy Thompson Poole and to the bringing about all these facilities, will be considered. You know, I'm also blessed, and I'll conclude with these remarks because there's much I could say, I'm kind of blessed in this situation because I played in almost every facility that this is replacing. I played in the lacrosse ball, I played for Matt Crustow in the baseball fields, I helped shag balls and sell pop with Rabbit's direction underneath the stands at the old baseball park as well as at the old Iverwind End City as well as Civic Stadium, right down to even when it became Marion Day. But with this whole community came together in the spirit of the rosary and celebrated not only their faith, but their wonderful cohesiveness with this, with this community, which obviously served as a foundation because again can reflect in the fact that when you cross the street, look, we're looking right at Scott Park. I can tell you, there's a lot of great ballplayers that played on those cinder tracks. If you dig down about three feet or less at Scott Park, I certainly played there and that was our practice facilities for most of the old, the old park facilities that existed there. So I must say, Mr. Mayor, this is, and Mr. Madam Chair, that this is a very special moment for me because I'd be, I can see this in, in, in two phases and I'm really honored and pleased that, I'm already honored and pleased to just be a part of that and I now just can't help but wait and see the final product. And again, teaching every one of you, I don't get driven to tears very often, but God bless you guys. You've delivered, you've said you would deliver and even some of your predecessors did so as well. And more importantly, you put where, you put the talk and you walk the talk. So God bless you and I appreciate it. I know the people of this city and the people of Ward Three certainly do as well. God bless you and thank you and we'll just continue to work to get this thing done.
Thank you, Councilor Morelli, and thank you for your leadership on this file. Councilor Collins? Sorry? Are you moving the recommendation?
Hold it, hold it.
Okay. It's all right, we got you right there. Thank you. And moved by yourself and seconded by Councilor Marula. All those in favor? Welcome.
Defensively and strongly, I think you can achieve it, but I got to tell you, you really got to set your mind to it.
You referenced in there that you've been working a lot of your career for this. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, you know, I happen to be, you know, every day, I happen to be a community alderman and being in the facilities that I was and also in the old days, we used to do a lot of what we call citywide committees and I saw what was going on elsewhere. I can tell you, I saw what was needed in the lower city. So, and we used to, we used to be at so many events almost nightly throughout the week that it wasn't hard to get a read on what your community needs. And I can tell you, any alderman or any councillor that's working in this community, it takes a couple of weeks, just a couple of weeks, certainly walk through wards like mine, it shouldn't take long for he or she to get a good feel of what's needed in that community.
The twenty-five million dollars, is that coming out of an existing fund?
The breakdown of the finance will be...
At this point, it's an incremental stage which incorporates rate of area rating as well as park development fees. So we're taking it step by step, but we're getting it shovel-ready and at which time we're bridging the financing subsequent to that.
Does that twenty-five million cover the seniors' center, rec center as well?
That would, yes. That number is...
At this point, at this point, yes. And again, as I said earlier to you, there's, we're just putting the packages together, but the bottom line is you've got to commit to the priority. This thing is going to happen no matter what. It's just a matter of doing it the right way and as we work through the process and we're continuing to work at this ongoing basis to expand it as well.
But this announcement today clearly has no impact on a general levy.
I was going to ask, so is the funding approved then?
That's right. The funding has been allocated.
What do you envision the neighborhood around this facility in ten years? How's it going to look in fact because of this?
Well, you know, I, I can tell you, I see a continuous change with the arrival of such thing as GO, GO Transit. I think transportation is another fundamental item that needs to be expanded, will be a part of the inner-city development. The nature of the people that are living in... Just to give you a quick... Thanks, Paul, for everything. Yeah. Sorry for the lack of breath. You've got to be training already.
Did see action, not only from this council, but also from staff and for that, I want to publicly applaud and commend everyone's effort and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Marula. Councilor McCarty?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. And this is an area of corporation that's just all-stars all the way around. And, you know, the, the one thing that we always talk about is trying to lever funding from the provincial and federal governments. Well, this, this part of the corporation, the water and wastewater, stormwater treatment section, you know, has levered over a hundred million dollars for the Randall Reef Project, you know, to, to clean up the contaminated seven off the US Steel Stelco Dock. It's also come up with over two-hundred thousand dollars in fund, or two-hundred million, sorry, two million dollars, two-hundred million dollars in funding from the province and the feds to go along with our, some of our rate dollars that we talked about as an investment to upgrade the Woodward Avenue sewage treatment plant to meet the remedial action plan targets and a much better water quality in the bay, which of course flows through Winnebago Basin out to the Ship Canal into Lake Ontario where we get our drinking water, a pretty important connection for us. So just a great story on all the funds that they've managed to leverage from the two higher levels of government. Councilor Jackson mentioned the Insurance Bureau of Canada. What an incredible partnership. And we're only at, one of two municipalities in Canada, the other one in B.C. that are partnering with the Insurance Bureau to develop a new tool to identify the areas that are at most at risk of flooding and to respond to those and put the controls in place that Councilor Marula talked about as well, for example, in East Hamilton, to make sure we're ready for, for any potential future flooding. And to have the Insurance Bureau of Canada, you know, we often hear from the insurance guys when they're saying, "We're not going to cover you," you know, those kinds of bad news stories. Well, they've actually proactively partnered with the city of Hamilton. So thanks to Dan McKinnon, I had the opportunity to speak at an event where the Insurance Bureau presented their, their approach to, to the media here in Hamilton. And it's just extraordinary for them to come proactively to partner with a municipality and they've chosen Hamilton to, to do that. I think that says a lot about us. The last comment, Councilor Jackson mentioned the, the rate increase around four percent, which is consistent with the last number of years, the funding to go to infrastructure as he suggested. But I wonder if I could just ask through you to, to Mike Zagarick, if Mike has his papers with him. We're actually one of the, the lower municipalities in terms of the increases, not only on the rate, but the amount of money paid per household, you know, as compared to our adjoining municipalities. Wonder if Mike could just touch on that, the actual number or just in general terms if he doesn't have it in front of him, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Mike Zagarick?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the council is correct in terms of our comparator group, the city of Hamilton's the third lowest with respect to residential water and wastewater rates. Our typical household can expect to pay approximately six hundred dollars in two thousand and fourteen. The two municipalities, Peel and Toronto, that are lower than the city of Hamilton are forecasting higher increases in two thousand and fourteen and future years. We expect those municipalities may be ranked above Hamilton in annual rates, placing Hamilton closer to the bottom of our comparator group in affordability of water and wastewater rates.
So I thought that important to touch on because, I mean, true confessions, we have some work to do on our residential taxes. We talk about that every week here at City Hall and we hear it from constituents, rightfully so. So that's one way of measuring affordability in Hamilton. But here's another way where we're amongst the lowest of the, of the water sewer and stormwater rates. So I think we need to celebrate that and continue to work hard on, on that part of the corporation. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor McCarty. Councilor Whitehead? Counselor Whitehead?
Mine's on the information section, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll wait and come back to you. Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and certainly I echo the comments, and certain kudos to our staff for a tremendous job, and all the staff that take care of our water, wastewater system in the city of Hamilton. I do have a question, though, and I apologize to staff that I didn't catch this sooner, but on item Q, I just want to get clarification, it mentions that in addition to any amendments required pursuant to subsection P, the sentry sewer surcharge and wastewater abatement by law, be amended to implement changes related to wastewater abatement program application process and to limit any approved retroactive rebates to the date the application is submitted. Could you just clarify this, and is this the program where if we have a senior whose flapper valve on the toilet has stuck and the water is running on and on and on, they don't realize till six months later, suddenly realize and they apply for abatement? So, is this the program that you're referring to through you, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Mike?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, no. The wastewater abatement program applies to our commercial industrial ratepayers, and again, it just aligns to our bylaw with respect to the applicable date that the abatement applies to.
Wonderful, pleased to hear that, and that the other program stays as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson, and I have Mayor Bettina last speaker.
Madam Chair, there's a reference to the Insurance Bureau of Canada, and I still have concerns about sharing data that might impact negatively on residents' insurance costs, and I know the city of Windsor recently rejected a proposal to share, I think it was FIRE data, for the same reason the Insurance Bureau was wanting to look into those numbers, and fortunately, where some would probably benefit, others might be seriously affected in the opposite way. So, we have a pilot program, that's fine, we'll see how that works out, but I'd be careful in going too far down that road, understanding that the Insurance Bureau of Canada is not trying to lower rates, it's trying to set the rates accurately depending on what their risks are, and we may be putting some of our residents at risk by sharing that data.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead, I have you down here for information. You want to speak on this item, item two?
I would speak to the item that the mayor just spoke to, and I think the mayor is absolutely bang on. I've heard it from the residents in the infested neighborhood, which we have been doing whatever we can to mitigate the floods that they've had in that area since 1982. The concern, again, is when you start putting this information out, they get red circled because they're an area of chronic flooding, even though we're making all, and taking all the necessary steps to mitigate it, but it will not translate into changing, in fact, might penalize them on their insurance rates. So, it is concerning when you share that kind of information with an organization that has one self-interest, and that is profit lines, it's not about people, and for anyone that is naive to believe that insurance companies are about people, just take a look at the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarty, second time.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor, and fair concerns raised by the two previous speakers. You can imagine, we wouldn't do anything here at the city to put our ratepayers at risk, our taxpayers, citizens, at risk, so I wonder if I can ask through you, to Jerry or Mike, whoever would like to address it, what controls do we have in place when we're working with an organization like the Insurance Bureau of Canada? Please.
Mike?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, with respect to this particular exercise, the intent of sharing the information is for modeling purposes only.
Counselor McCarty, for modeling purposes only.
Yeah, so it's very important that that get out, and I'm sure if we wanted to get some more details on that, Mike and Jerry and Dan McKinnon, who's working on this probably most closely, would be pleased to share how we're sharing that data and the controls we have in place to make sure it's not misused.
Thank you. First-time speaker, Counselor Clark.
Fine folks, I had raised concerns about this when the IVC came in here to ask our support, and it's not the modeling, they actually want the hydraulics, the flow of the water under the property of the houses, which is the first time the insurance industry has been interested in aquifer flows in the history in the country, and they're utilizing it so that they can use it as an escape clause, or to increase the costs on insurance because their flooding costs are so high. From day one, I said IVC's not our friend, they're here to look after themselves, and I caution folks, be careful what you wish for, because it'll come back.
Thank you. That exhausts the list of speakers. Item two, carried. Counselor Whitehead, did you wish to speak on the information?
Yes, I think we need to recognize the good and hard work of Counselor Collins in regards to finding us areas of, we're in the information section of General Issues Committee, are we not? Oh, sorry, I thought we were, you said, are we...
Sorry, that's my fault. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, here we go. Item three, Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Rose hit it on me, so I apologize.
Well, that's okay, and I'm gonna jump ahead of Counselor Whitehead now, so, but I too had notes here, and before we get into item three, these are all the items that we dealt with at General Issues Committee with regards to the budgets, and our good councillor from Ward Five has been once again very thorough, and pretty well gone through the budget books with forensic expediency, and certainly has saved our taxpayers, well, has found savings of approximately $3.3 million, and I want to thank Counselor Collins for the tremendous amount of work he's done, and continues to do to take care of our, keeping our taxes low. Thank you.
Here, here is right. Counselor Whitehead, here's the part you wanted to talk to, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is, in fact, the one, because it is extensive, it almost looks like an information section, but I actually wanted to, and I echo the comments of Counselor Pearson, and I want to thank Counselor McCarty, because he's been pretty busy on the keyboard in the last number of days, because there's been a mishap prevention by a number of cyclists in the community, and what the decision of council actually meant. So, again, I want to take this opportunity on stream and on cable to make it clear to the viewers that we are not lowering the budget, in fact, what we did is look at what we've invested, I think $500,000 plus in the counter lanes, bike lanes on Cannon Street, I think for the first time we're hitting over $1 million in investment in cycling, so clearly there's a commitment to cycling. What this was all about, in fact, was that there's more dollars in the count than there are projects that they can actually implement in the 2014 year. So, as a result of that, we took $100,000 off the levy for the 2014 season, because it's just not gonna practically be spent, because it's impossible to implement the projects to utilize those dollars. So, I want to provide that clarification, take the opportunity, and again, I want to count, I think I'm sending all my emails to you too, Counselor McCarty, and you're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarty.
I think Counselor Whitehead covered it, we, you know, I think the exciting part is the bidirectional bike lanes on Cannon are going ahead, the bidirectional bike lanes in Ward Two on Hunter Street, part of our Shifting Gear Cycling Planner, that's a core part of the plan, they'll go ahead next year, I believe, through Counselor Farr next spring, and lots of other implementation happening, so, lots of good stuff happening, we're working with the department to help them implement, to make sure they get these projects out the door, so, good news all the way around, thanks to Counselor Whitehead for clarifying.
Thank you. So, that's on item three. Carried. Item four.
Here.
Counselor Farr?
Wish to speak to something on page 13 of 13, the motion E. I'll wait until the appropriate time.
Thank you, so let's do it again. Number four. Thank you. Mayor Bettina may have a motion on the report, please.
You may, it's moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just jumped in a little too early there. Very quickly, Madam Chair, you'll refer to page 12 of 13, bottom of the page, this is the motion as a result of this meeting respecting Spring Valley Arena in Ancaster, it was moved by Counselor Ferguson, the Ward Councillor, in its respecting funding for what is a much-needed renovation. I am not going to try to lift this and look for a reconsideration, I'd rather leave this here for posterity, and if you'll note on the page 13 of 13 up top, there was a lone nay. And since that nay, that day, the nay traveled to Ancaster and Spring Valley Arena, and it has been made very, very clear to me, thanks to a guided tour by Amy, the Zamboni driver slash snack bar attendant slash maintenance gal, she was mopping up as I arrived, and she took me on the tour of these facilities, and I can tell you now, having seen it firsthand, which unfortunately I had not seen prior to this nay vote, that the conditions are deplorable, they are everything and more of what we have heard from the Ward Councillor, this is much-needed in advance of when it was supposed to happen next year, it's taken from a reserve to get this work done in an expedient fashion. We have wrecked or missing quarter paneling, we have ventilation issues, general disrepair, and the washroom facilities and the showers, and with a lot of girls hockey going on at Spring Valley, are in very poor condition, worst of all is the smell, and I'll leave it at that, and leave my vote the way it is, as a reminder that maybe next time around, I should look into it a little more thoroughly, and I congratulate Ward Councillor for the good move here today.
You're a big man, Charlie Brown. And I didn't think anything smelt in Ancaster, but we'll just continue on. Counselor Whitehead?
Well, I certainly didn't expect it, but it was a pleasant surprise, Counselor Farr. Just for clarification, I did move an amendment, I believed, or was it a direction, I'm looking for correction from clerks, that the block funding for the 2015 would replenish the reserve that these dollars are coming from, I don't see it here.
Okay, can we go back to the number you're talking about? Are we still talking about number four?
Yeah.
Counselor Whitehead?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson would like to respond, if you don't mind.
I'm not sure it was necessary, and Mike can confirm this, but, and Ron was here to react to it, because it's not gonna be needed in 2015, it's gonna be available for the projects, or to replenish the reserve, whatever council chooses, because it was in the 2015, 2015 happened, so, through you to Mike.
I got that right?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the funding for 2014 is not coming from a reserve, it's within the capital levy funding envelope, it will free up capacity in 2015 with respect to the recreation preliminary block forecast.
Your phone, please.
Okay.
Counselor Whitehead, you still have the floor?
Well, I think the point was that we're taking this from an unallocated fund that wasn't designed to do this, and we support it because of the urgency, and all I'm suggesting is, since it was already budgeted for in 2015, and we did have unanimous support at the table when we had this discussion, was that we just replenish what in 2015, that very account, so that if we have these urgencies in the future, you still have a reserve that's being topped up and not being exhausted, so it's just maintaining that flexibility on a go-forward basis. We did, by the way, have unanimous support at committee on this.
Thank you. Except Charlie Brown at the end here. Okay, so the question is, and I'm gonna, and if you don't mind, I'll refer to our General Manager of, Acting General Manager of Financing here. Mike, is it the 2015 allotment for this project going to stay in the project, or is it going to go back into unallocated funds?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the project was originally broken up into 2014-15, the design work, $60,000 in 2014, the balance in 2015, the decision before council today is to accelerate the project funded in 2014, that will leave capacity in the recreation block that might have otherwise been allocated to the Spring Valley project in 2015.
Counselor Whitehead, you still have the floor?
Yes.
I don't know, we're beating and debating something that was passed and moved by myself at the committee, all I'm asking is, it's not being reflected here, and I'm just saying that, consistent with what happened in that particular committee, and I would challenge the clerks to look at the live stream, I did mention it, and I did move it, and it was supported, so it's just not being reflected in the council. If there's an issue with it now, from a debate point of view, that's fine, that's fair enough, but how do you debate something that didn't get translated on the council block?
So, I'm gonna look to clerk, Counselor Whitehead, so you're going to take that direction, please go back to the live stream and see what needs to be corrected, and bring it back to the next council meeting?
That's fair.
If needed.
Madam Deputy Mayor, through you, yes, just like we did with the one item today, we can do the same.
Yes. Okay, Counselor Whitehead?
That's fine, thank you.
All right, that's fine. Okay, so I'm now gonna go to Mayor Bettina, may I have a motion on the report, please?
You may, it's moved by myself, and seconded by Counselor Ferguson, that report 13022A of the General Issues Committee be adopted, is presented, and the information section received.
All those in favor?
Here.
Thank you. 6.8, the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee presents Report 13-011, and respectfully recommends, I've got Counselor Powers and Counselor Pearson.
On behalf of the five members of the Audit, Finance and Membership, which is, was it Times Challenges, which is, is that we are very grateful for the leadership of Counselor Pearson, she was very steadfast in, how shall I say, herding the caps into the meetings, and ensuring that between her and Ms. Paparello that we had quorum, we went through a substantial number of items under the Audit, Finance Administration, and she attempted to keep us on the straight and narrow on that, notwithstanding our best desires to warn her, she brought us back on track in order to make some decisions. The fact that the purview of the committee has been expanded to include audit, and Ann Packerack, through no shortage of her department, has ensured every agenda has a number of supplementary audit follows-up that, and we do thank her for that, but clearly, we're here to thank Counselor Pearson for her leadership, taking us through the year. The most recent meeting was a short little meeting, 42 agenda items, and not including the OBL list and that, so, and the fact that we were able to maneuver it in around four hours, and that was, was actually three hours, was an accomplishment, so, Maria, on behalf of us in the committee, thank you very much.
Here, here.
And the membership of the AFNA Committee is part of the discussions of the Governance Committee for the forthcoming council meeting, and we'd like to thank, as part of Part C here, is the offer and our pleasing acceptance of Counselor Collins to the committee.
Thank you. And Counselor Pearson, I concur, by the way.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I certainly thank Counselor Powers and all the committee members, yourself, Counselor Clark, Counselor Marula, and it's been an interesting and moving year with regards to committee, because as was stated, it's been, we've had our issues with getting quorum, and being sure we had quorum to get meetings going along, but we were able to get through them, and I just, just for the viewing public's information, through Stephanie Paparello of the Clerk's Department, we handled 176 staff reports, a total of 308 items in 11 meetings this year, I think we were pretty efficient, and as Counselor Powers stated, our last agenda was over four inches thick, double-sided print, and I know that when I went back to the office after just over three hours, my assistant was shocked and wouldn't believe that we had actually finished the whole agenda, so to my colleagues on committee, and to certainly all of staff that I mentioned twice that day, tremendous amount of work, great job in putting the reports together for us, and giving us concise information over the year on every meeting, so, wanted to extend that, and I also wanted to thank Counselor Collins for certainly putting his name forward, as we know, being the forensic accountant, he's certainly welcome on our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson, I also agree. Item one again.
Here.
One, two.
Here.
Three.
Here.
Four.
Here.
Five.
Here.
Six.
Here.
Seven.
Here.
Eight.
Here.
Nine.
Here.
Ten.
Here.
Eleven.
Here.
Twelve.
Here.
Thirteen.
Here.
Thirteen. Counselor Ferguson?
I just wanted to briefly speak to this issue, I see it's being referred to, I put the original motion before council, to find out how we petitioned CRTC to expand fiber optics to the rural areas of Hamilton, you know, farmers are depending more and more on internet connection, on weather, and crop prices, and so on, but the report came back about expanding fiber optics throughout Ontario, big, long report there from the Western Ontario Wardens and the Eastern Ontario Wardens, but that wasn't the ask, the ask was for Hamilton, so the report really missed the mark, and I went back to the original So the report really missed the mark. And I went back to the original resolution, and it was pretty clear. It was about expanding it in Hamilton. So we'll deal with this at the Agriculture and Rural Affairs, but it's just bragging. And I just want to comment that the original motion was misinterpreted. I'm not interested in Northwestern Ontario when they're going to get internet connection. I'm more interested in Alberton and Carluke and Pushling.
Glanbrook.
Glanbrook. I think Glanbrook probably has it, but rural areas of Glanbrook are going to get access to high-speed internet. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Bettina, can you take the chair? I was the one that actually referred this back with the appropriate staff who wrote the report on the response that they got back. So that was my doing, to send it back to Ag and Roll, to see if there's any recommendations coming back out of Ag and Roll. So we got the report in front of us at AFNA, and that's what I asked for, is that that report with the appropriate staff go to Agricultural and Rules Affairs and discuss that. So thank you, Mayor Bettina. I'll take that back for me, please. Item 14.
Jerry.
15.
Jerry.
16.
Jerry.
17.
Jerry.
18. And Mayor Bettina, if you could please take the chair for me, I'd really appreciate it. I just want to make a comment on this particular report. I moved this report that it comes back to GIC with the appropriate departments. I also want to recognize that this is not the majority of staff. It's not union, it's not non-union, it's not one particular department, it's not one particular person. But I'm just trying to wrap my head around this costly issue to the city, especially when we're trying to find efficiencies. So that's my comment for now, and thank you very much, Mayor. So we'll go back to item 18.
Jerry.
Item 19.
Jerry.
Item 20.
Jerry.
21.
Jerry.
22.
Jerry.
23.
Jerry.
24.
Jerry.
25.
Jerry.
26.
Jerry.
27.
Jerry.
28.
Jerry.
29.
Jerry.
30.
Jerry.
31.
Jerry.
32.
Jerry.
33.
Jerry.
34.
Jerry.
35.
Jerry.
36.
Jerry.
37.
Jerry.
38.
Jerry.
39.
Jerry.
40. 40. Mayor Bettina, please.
This is a really important report, and it needs to be given much more discussion than it had. And just one thing that I wanted to highlight out of that report. The 25% of employees of our city surveyed said that they had been pressured to compromise their ethics and values on the job. Can you imagine if the police department had a 25% response that way? Because we know that in every organization, there's a percentage of ethical issues, but that seems very high to me. I'm not going to belabor it now, but I can cite you several examples in my own case of Ward Two issues, that staff reports came forward from Counselor of another ward, completely blindsiding me with no reference. And how do those things happen? And I could give you many more. We're getting close to the Christmas season. We have to have a light and a good evening, but at some point, we have to deal with 25% of our employees surveyed said that they had been pressured to compromise their ethics and values on the job. So I will be referring to that and other parts of this report in future discussions.
Okay, thank you very much. So that was item number, oh, sorry. And Mr. Murray, I apologize, I should have come to you back at item, I believe, 18, and I apologize. I think the mayor put something in my water.
Not a problem. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, just in terms of the mayor's comments regarding item 40 and that particular statistic, so.
Forty.
As we talked at AFNA, the auditor has undertaken a unique review of our values and ethics in this organization. And I say that only because auditors typically do not undertake this kind of work. But when Ann made clear that she was doing this, and we welcomed it, because at the end of the day, we are engaged, as you know, in reviewing the culture of this organization. So the particular fact that the mayor is focused on causes me the same amount of concern as he does him, and I'm sure every member of council, as well as every member of SMT. So we do look forward to having further discussions on what it is that we can do to raise the confidence of people in this organization, to be proud of the organization that we work for, and to address what are very troubling statistics. And it bothers all of us, and I think, though, we won't get better until we are willing and able to recognize some of the things that are absolutely problematic. And so I think it's, I applaud the organization for having the courage to kind of uncover things that are maybe holding us back from being as successful as we can. So I do appreciate the mayor pointing that out, because it's, I think it's only through, you know, knowing the truth about ourselves that we're going to get any better. And if I can, to the item 18, I just want to point out a couple of things, and I think it was a very wise move of the committee to bring the matter, refer the matter to GIC. I do want to have an opportunity to get very specific as to what we as staff believe to be the problem. But having said that, I want to be really clear in terms of this organization and the many, many, many staff that work here. And I can tell you right off that about 25% of all staff, just in the last year, took zero days off for sick leave. Now, I'm sure some of them probably came to work, and they shouldn't have, but nonetheless, we have a very dedicated, and that's not specific to union or non-union, that's our entire workforce. But to be very clear, too, in terms of council, and in particular AFNA, over the last, not one or two years, but several years, I would say dating back certainly to 2010, when resources were asked for by staff to start to better manage the situation of absenteeism, council was there to give us the resources to start the tackles. I want to come back, certainly in the first quarter of 2014, and be able to talk to you about what those resources have been able to achieve. And I want to talk to you very specifically about where I think, as I say, the problem really lies with absenteeism. I mean, as much as I'm sure all of us would like to have a workforce of 5,000 full-time employees never have an absent day, I mean, the practical reality is that, you know, people are going to be off sick. I think council completely supports and understands that those people who are sick and sick for legitimate reasons should not be here. But it's really those that, and there are a few, and I would say they're a very minor number in our organization overall, that, you know, there are patterns to absenteeism that certainly causes some issues here. So, you know, I think we need to recognize, whether you're union or non-union, there's so many good people here doing the work that you ask us to do and do it extremely well. So all I'm saying is that I look forward to having an opportunity to be very specific about what this issue is, as we understand it. We have better information than we had, say, a year ago, in order to kind of really diagnose the problem. There are remedies to it, and I want to share with you what I think some of those remedies are, and I look forward to the opportunity early in the next year. If I can do it in January, I'll be in front of you in January with a report explaining, I think, where we're at and how we can move forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Again, my apologies. I have Counselor Whitehead on item 40.
Thank you. I think it sort of ties into both items when you talk about values, ethics. And I know that sometimes, I mean, I'm sure she'll say, if you got a message, pound it and pound it hard and pound it often, and that's paraphrasing, and that's what I want to do here. I've spoke to my colleagues, I spoke to staff, I spoke to the city manager. I gave the example of the ODEC report in regards to what's called congruence of ethics, where they, I believe it was Austin, Texas, where they implemented on a number of departments. And what transpired in those departments was higher productivity, less absence. And some of the very issues that were identified in this 40, in regards to the values and ethics, when they did the original survey, was the same type of results they were getting in Austin, Texas. So this is not surprising. I want to make it clear, if we're panicking about this, this is obviously pretty common in larger organizations. So I want to make it clear that it's not unique to Hamilton by any stretch of imagination. I think that's certainly the findings of ODEC. But the point I'm making is that when you take a congruence of ethics, if you take an ethic policy that remonates right from this council chamber, meaning that no one's treated differently in the approach of ethics, values, that should emanate all the way down to the bottom ranks. And unfortunately, that's not the system we have in place here today. So hopefully, we're moving in that direction. But clearly, when employees feel comfortable that they can report things to their supervisor without retribution, that results in empowerment, results in them being happy and be proud to be at work, but they feel that they can't talk to their immediate supervisors or the supervisors above them, it creates a problem, and this is where you get into the whole ethics issue. So I'm proud of the fact that this is in front of us, because we're not hiding. We're not hiding this fact. Now we're taking it on. We understand it, we know it's there. Now we need to put a plan of action together, and I think there are some good models out there to emulate, to ensure that we get the best we can from those that are underperforming within our organization. So I want to thank staff for bringing this to our attention.
Counselor Whitehead, Counselor DeVal, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chair, and I'd just like to know of comment on item 18, what the city manager was talking about of coming back. And going to seeing that, first, I just want to thank Mr. Dave Lindeman, our staff, for the long chat we had last night on the phone concerning the issue about absenteeism and the report that came out. So I know we're looking into it, and I know the city manager is taking it serious, and I understand there's a lot of concerns. But one of the things I don't understand, when it was being released in the press, of the increase.
No, because Chris Murray commented on 18, Counselor DeVal just wants to finish talking about item 18.
Right.
Yes. I apologize. I wasn't sure until he just said that it was to continue on to Chris Murray's comments. Thank you.
So where I was coming from is, I understand, you know, we have collective agreements where we have six days, and those are negotiated items. So for anybody that doesn't think that those costs weren't going to be used, and I don't know what the language was put in there for. But I know that there was a problem we dealt with years ago on the absentee, and we hired some people, and it seemed to be doing good, and we're doing the reverse trend of cutting back. Unfortunately, with the information that I received yesterday, and I went over it, so I want to tell the city manager that I find it odd, from last year to this year, there was an over $300,000 increase on the cost of absenteeism. But when I looked at it and looked at all the stats, it was an increase from every department, every one of them, except, sorry, I shouldn't say every one of them. One was EMS, was actually a decrease. But everyone had a creeping increase in costs for absenteeism. So it made me wonder if, something that I think the city manager should be looking at is the figures that, have we appealed WSIB cases? And that makes the numbers of the sick pay go up. I've seen that happen when we're playing with numbers. Is our return-to-work policy, does something drain out of that, and we're not using that anymore, or as much as we're doing? But something, it's not just everybody just got sick. When you see that pattern going to every department, something happened with the figures. And I think that has to be investigated, especially with the WSIB. And I know that, you know, there's cost measures there, but it does increase the sick time because that's where it's going to be used. So we really want to find out in union and non-union what this is all about. And I'm hoping that he can find out, investigate each department, why those numbers increased, or we're just being totally negligent and not asking for people or keeping an eye on them. Because when I talk to the unions, they feel management is doing a great job keeping, trying to keep them in control. They know that by the grievances, the disciplines that are being handed out, and the people that are being called in. So there's something odd that it's, by saying managers aren't doing their job, when it looks like some other people are saying they are, numbers are increasing, and yet it's right across the whole corporation. So I just want to put that out for thought for our city manager when he comes back with that, and maybe he can help us with why the numbers increased. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Clark. Just for clarity, item 40 or item 18?
I'm actually dealing with item 40, but.
Thank you.
Counselor DeVal, just, we did raise those issues.
Yes, we did.
We asked about the patterns, because from my experience, there's always something that's causing the absenteeism, short of a significant flu outbreak. The conversations that occurred, and it was really quite interesting, because when we got to item 40, they started to cross over. There was three or four items within the agenda that started kind of melding together because they really all fell together. We dealt with violence in the workplace, workplace harassment and sexual harassment, and the corporate values. So there was a significant crossover, and a number of those reports are coming back. So we will have an opportunity to delve into them in more detail. And the correct that we did ask that the absenteeism one go to the GIC. It's important on item 40 that when we deal with, had the whistleblower protection bylaw, and we were the first, and we celebrated this, by the way, we were the first municipality in Canada to put in place a whistleblower protection. But when you get a statistic that 50% of your employees wouldn't blow the whistle on a fellow employee because they're afraid of retaliation, that's what the whistleblower protection bylaw was supposed to prevent. And we did have those discussions, Mr. Murray, as you recall, at the Audit Committee, with regards to how we're protecting employees, and the employees need to know that senior management is not afraid about pulling the strings or levers on certain mechanisms that are rather draconian to protect the employees. So I think my point is, Madam Chair, there's going to be more discussion on this. There was a great deal at Audit. It probably took up most of the three and a half hours of the meeting. But we weren't complete. We had referred them back to come back for another day, so there'll be further discussions also.
Thank you. And last speaker, Counselor Collins, item 40 or 18, please?
Item 18. I wasn't going to speak on 18 tonight. I was actually going to save my questions for the budget process, but in light of some of the discussion that's taken place, if you recall, in 2010, at least for those people who were on council, as was referenced, there was a report done by our senior management team, by a consultant, that suggested that our HR department was under-resourced and understaffed. And as Counselor Ferguson pointed out in the 2012 budget process, I had the opportunity to watch the tapes again today, we had a very spirited discussion at the Convention Center about that issue. And we settled on increasing the resources in that area. Subsequent to the increases that we had put into the HR, we hired, as was referenced earlier, two back-to-work individuals who were going to help us with our absentee problem. We decided that we were not going to add to the complement and fund that from the tax levy. We actually said that based on the recommendations that came forward, that they would be two contract positions for a period of three years, and that over those three years, as was referenced by Counselor DeVal earlier and in past meetings, those positions with the savings that were to accrue from the work that these individuals were going to do would pay for those positions themselves, and at the end of three years, which, and that time expires at the end of 2013, council would have an opportunity then to discuss and debate whether or not those contractual positions would remain in the organization. And I'm assuming the choice we have is to make them full-time employees. So the question that I would have, in light of the fact that that three-year time period is up, that last year, I'm not a member of the committee, I am now, as of this evening, but I know the committee had a long discussion and adopted the Management Action Plan regarding absenteeism. This year in 2013, if you recall, and I referenced it at the committee meeting the other day, the absenteeism issue is part of our service delivery review. It was one of the top issues that were identified, as almost 100 that were brought forward by Mr. Zagarik and his finance staff. The absenteeism issue, as well as the savings that might accrue from reducing that number, were one of the top priorities, and that's now one that we just received an update a couple of weeks ago, that is part of our service delivery review. It's one of the few that we've chosen as the first phase. So I'm sorry to go on in terms of that, the history related to that, but there is quite a history in terms of additional funding that was specifically invested into absenteeism by council at the urging of our staff. And I think for those of us who were at the committee, and again, listen to the comments that were asked last year at Budget Time, last year it was actually Counselor Jackson who raised it, to say, this is still an issue for us, we seem to have flatlined, our constituents want us to do better. And I think the phrase was that we're going in the right direction, and we are starting to see a turnaround. Those are the same comments that were given to Counselor Ferguson in 2012, when he raised the issue. And in fact, it was, we're showing a good decrease in average sick days from our peak in 2008 and 2010. direction. And to be fair, we have made improvements since, you know, our worst years, which would have been 2008. We were at 11 days. We went down to 9.98 days, now we're up to 10 and a half. So we've sort of plateaued there. And I think the expectation from committee members, both past and present, and those people in the budget process who've asked about this, is that we expected to see more of an improvement. And so I say those comments with the greatest of respect. My question that I have, and I'm sorry it took me so long to get there, is when will council have an opportunity then to debate the merit of actually retaining those two individuals that were paid from a reserve fund, if I understand it, or conversely, deciding whether or not to include that in our permanent compliment, sorry, paid from the levy?
So Chris Murray, do you want to comment on that? When will the discussion happen, please?
Through, Madam Deputy Mayor, the two individuals that you're talking about, one, in fact, our occupational health nurse was brought to committees' attention back in September, a report identifying that that individual would transition from a contract to a full-time position. That was brought in front of you in September and approved. In terms of the other position, I think it was full-time from day one. I'd have to confirm that. But, so that's kind of where we stand at this point in time.
Counselor Collins.
So to be clear, the second position will come back with the same decision in terms of whether or not it will be made a full-time position or not. Does that happen through the budget process, or was the answer that they're already part of the permanent complement?
Okay.
If memory serves me right, I could go back to the motion, I'm certain, from three years ago, but it was that they would be contract positions, they would be funded from the reserve, and council could, this was, I guess, a pilot, that we would after three years have the opportunity to determine whether or not the investment was a sound one or not.
Okay. To recap, I heard September, the occupational therapist was brought forward as FTE, and the second one was already and always was an FTE. Mr. Murray?
The, the other position was a transfer position from another department. I, I want to be careful that I'm not, you know, giving you inaccurate information. I would like the opportunity just to confer with staff here a bit to understand exactly what happened and-
And I didn't ask, sorry, I didn't prepare staff tonight that I would ask that question. So in fairness, if they want to come back to their next update that they're providing to the committee, or, I mean, we're on the verge of going through the budget process, if that can be part of the presentation, I'm happy with that. But I raised that in the context of trying to relay some additional history that we didn't get into the other day.
Okay, thank you. And I think the recommendation was to bring that report back to the GIC, so can it be happening at that point in time, because that's part of the topic, correct?
Through, Madam Deputy Mayor, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Collins. So we've already done forty, let's do it again, just to be sure. Forty, forty-one, forty-two, and Counselor Powers.
Sorry, and not going back to thirty-five, but I just want to note for the information of all of us, is it's a value-for-money audit, so it's the start of what's coming out of the expanded duties of Ann Packerack and her staff. They are not only our audit staff, but also we've entrusted in them the value for audit. So very clearly through the Audit, Finance and Administration, is you will see these reports relative to value-for-money audits. So I encourage my colleagues, all of our colleagues on council on that, to keep your eyes out for, for these, because they're parts of the, not only the work plan, but, but also the needs as both the city managers and Ms. Packerack see.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Whitehead.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I look forward to it. I'm a big proponent of this whole new initiative. I guess, were we going to get an opportunity, maybe to the city manager, to ask, I guess it's Ann, some questions in regards to the scope and mandate and responsibility? Because I'm a bit concerned that it seems to be morphing into more of an operational review type operation versus a money-for-audit operation. I wouldn't mind being able to flush that, that issue and concern.
Through, Deputy Mayor, certainly, I mean, this can be, if you wish, discussed at the next day FNA meeting, and so any concerns can be addressed then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Now we're coming back to you, I promise. Counselor Pearson, may I have a motion on the report, please?
Yes, you may, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, and it's been moved by myself, seconded by Ward Nine Counselor Brad Clark, that the eleventh report of the Audit and Finance and Administration Committee be adopted as presented in the Information Section Received.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
So if we can go to six point nine, please. The Emergency and Community Services Committee presents Report 13-010 and respectfully recommends item one. Counselor Jackson.
I know, Madam Deputy Mayor, that people won't believe that I'm going to make this next expression a feeling, but I do wish to thank Counselor Terry Whitehead, who's done a remarkable job as our leader and chairman of the Emergency and Community Services Committee. And all kidding aside, we all know he's got a passion for both social services, social housing, recreation, and a lot of the other divisions and departments that reported through our committee. And I do want to thank him for keeping us on track throughout the year, a very challenging, difficult year. Always in this committee, we just never seem to have enough money for the need in our community that's out there, and I just want to thank him for his leadership. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping the sarcasm down to a minimum. Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Whitehead.
I was going to indicate I noted Counselor Jackson drinking Ignud just before that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's, thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank God I've got a great sense of humor. Merry Christmas, everyone. I want to thank Action Take This opportunity, not only to my colleagues that made the job a heck, very easy, but it's very enlightening, and I want to be honest and truthful and frank. I mean, since I've been elected, I avoid this committee like the plague because I knew the challenges that this, this particular committee has. This term of council, because I was hearing in the community and concerns, that I put my name forward, and certainly my colleagues supported me going on the committee and eventually becoming chair. What I want to note for the community is that we have some of the best staff in this division, from the senior management. I had the opportunity to, and go through tours with Joanne and, and, having a senior moment here for a moment, Gillian and others to go to many of our facets, and go right to the front lines and meet some of our frontline workers, and, and thank them because it's a thankless job. It's a very tough division in many areas that they deal with, and they do an incredible, incredible, incredible job. I want to pass that on to each and every one of them on behalf of the committee, that, you know, we're not so far distant here at City Hall that we don't recognize their efforts to deliver the supreme service every day, day in and out. And again, it's a testimony to the leadership in the division, and I sincerely, sincerely thank staff for giving me the opportunity and opening my eyes on the challenges in the division.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Item one.
Gary.
Item two.
Gary.
Item three.
Gary.
Item four.
Gary.
Item five.
Gary.
Item six, whoa, whoa, sorry. Item six.
Gary.
I'm losing you, everybody together. Item seven.
Gary.
Item eight.
Gary.
Item nine.
Gary.
Item ten.
Gary.
We have angels here. So, I'm sorry, all I heard was a whole whack of noise over here. I've got item ten. Counselor, sorry, we've got a speakers list here. So Counselor DeVal?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to Gillian Hendry. Her dedication to putting this action plan together, and this has to do with our housing homelessness, having a plan and a strategy going forward for the next 10 years. As your FCM representative, I went to Ottawa on, on this housing issue, and I just want to assure everybody that this is not a Hamilton problem, this is not a provincial problem. It's a Canadian, na, na, national problem. And when I was there, there was over 100 representatives that we went and met, over 140 MPs and senators. And I'll tell you, it was, it was certainly very educating to try to have people understand what the need is across Canada. When I went to see some MPs, and they said it's a provincial problem, and you had to explain to them it is a Canadian problem. But I was with some other councillors from London in an agro-region, where we teamed up, and we seen even some of our MPs in the Hamilton area, Wayne Marston and David Sweet. I seen some other MPs, and majority of them get it. They understand the problems and the need that, and I'll just use Hamilton, and we got a 5,700-person waiting list that needs affordable housing. And it's not, not about the amount of money for affordability, but also accessible housing. We're running shortage of that. So this is a number-one priority that the FCM has gone forward for this year, and we've actually went there and advocated for all of the municipalities, and trying to get the federal government to come to the table with the province and the other municipalities, FCM, and come out with a national strategy program going forward, where every person at the end of the day will end up having a home, an affordable home. So we won't have to have these people out in the streets freezing at nighttime. So Gillian has put together, and is way ahead of the game, she has gone forward and put this, this strategy plan together for Hamilton, and a lot of people were kind of surprised that I met. In fact, I promised Mr. Sweet that I would send him the package because he wanted to see the plan. And so, thank you, Gillian. It was nice to have all that education going forward, and making my job easier, going to Ottawa, and hoping that we can get this plan and get them on the table.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work at the FCM, Counselor DeVal. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Let me thank Counselor DeVal for his involvement at the FCM, particularly on this particular file, and Joanne Prail and Gillian Henry for this report that's before us. And what's very interesting about this report is that we're putting a plan of action together as a city. But this particular issue regarding housing and homelessness is one of, one of those issues that falls within, should fall within the federal jurisdiction. We are the only country in the G8 that doesn't have a national homeless strategy. And in saying that, it's something that we need yesterday. And the conflicting information we're receiving from the federal government on this particular file, I think is something that needs to be expanded upon. We have a situation where a group of Torontonians have challenged both the federal and provincial governments to a charter argument in that they feel that it's a charter argument that homelessness should be dealt with because people have a right to secure an equitable status nationally. But what's interesting about that is not so much the challenge in the charter, but the fact that you have both the provincial and federal government basically challenging the challenge. So in essence, opposing the right for a national, for a national strategy, which is really a discrepancy that needs to be addressed, in that you can't say in one breath, "We need a national strategy," but in another suggests that somehow we don't need to follow through with this because of the financial obligations associated with it. So that conflicting information, I think, needs to be expanded upon, and what you have before us is a motion that was passed at committee, basically allowing staff to assess that very issue, so that we can have some sort of reconciliation on, on that discrepancy and assure ourselves where the federal and provincial governments truly stand on this very important issue. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marula. Counselor McCady?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. And the other part of the report also spoke to the economics of this issue as well. We know that there's, there's a very clear connection between healthcare costs and, and penitentiary costs and, and other costs that occur over, over the decades, and, and folks that are, don't have the proper, proper housing, end up having all kinds of additional problems. So it just makes the case crystal clear that the investments by the province of Ontario, they pay the healthcare costs, that's part of the Ministry of Health's budget, and the, you know, the federal Corrections, Corrections Canada investments. So there's very clear economic payoffs for both those levels of government to make the investment. And for some reason, they're just not doing so. They're, they're, instead, they're investing sort of end-of-the-pipe solutions, like building more, more jails and, and, you know, getting tougher on crime, sort of thing. But if you actually make the investments in, in a living wage, you know, from, from an income perspective, proper social assistance rates, which we've asked for here, and from the city council to, to the province, you know, actually implementing the Ontario Poverty Strategy rather than just taking the Hamilton Poverty Strategy and, and calling it the Ontario Strategy and calling it a day, the province of Ontario needs to implement their, their own poverty strategy. They need to develop the homeless and housing strategy, not to mention a transit strategy and everything else. Here in Canada, we don't have national leadership. We, the leadership comes from cities, and that's why mayors like Mayor Nenshi in Calgary is talking about a new city charter, which we need to take the, the lead from a municipal's perspective, because we just don't see the leadership at the provincial, and particularly at the federal level. So that's a discussion that we want to carry on. The economic impact here in Hamilton as well, folks who, who don't have a home are either coach surfing, or trying to find a place to live, or are truly homeless, can't properly participate in the local economy. You know, it's, it's pretty hard to get a job if you don't have a stable home situation. And if, if they're not participating in the local economy, they're, they're not, you know, making investments, they're not buying things, all the things that make our local economy tick. So there's a very clear connection between the, the challenges with, with housing and homelessness, and the economic issues that we really are concerned about at all levels of government. So this is just a very clear direction, thanks to Gillian Debradati and Jenny Vingria and other staff. Really what we've got now, we've got a very clear government relations strategy on housing, probably the best in the country, looking at Counselor DeVal, because he's seen all the different strategies across the country through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So we can really go to the province, we can go to Ottawa, we can start talking about a tripartite arrangement where all three levels of government invest in Hamilton. We'll tell them exactly where they need to invest. We've got the details of exactly where the money should go and what the outcomes are going to be for that money. It's a great place to invest, Hamilton. So this is, this is giving us this today, and I look forward to carrying on in Queens Park and Ottawa on this file. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McCady. Final speaker, Counselor Whitehead.
I want to thank, often, we thank staff, but when you look at a report such as this, there was a lot of people involved, and that is, a lot of the advocates and the providers in our community were part of the dialogue that helped evolve this particular report. So I want to, in all sincerity, say thank you to each and every one of those organizations. On the closer front, and I think Counsel, or, sorry, Counsel, Counselor Prail, sorry. Joanne, Joanne-
He doesn't want it.
Joanne, Joanne indicated, because one of the concerns I have is that, are we taking more of a load as a regional location? And that's yet to be determined. I mean, that, there's the thesis. I think Joanne had indicated that one of the attractions in Hamilton is the affordable housing. Well, more affordable than certainly in the GTEHA. And I know that Counselor DeVal and I sat with a couple of councillors from Oakville, I believe it was Toronto and Mississauga, and they had indicated that, that because affordability and market, they're actually suggesting, and not being vindictive, by telling people that there's more affordable housing in Hamilton, and that's where they're coming. So obviously now, you, you got another challenge in this community in regards to the fact that what little affordable housing we have is getting, is very competitive in, in getting into it, which puts a greater burden on us to address the, the housing issue in this community. And the reason I raise that as a growing concern and keep our eyes on, on that ball is because I want to make sure that we provide adequate housing, the housing strategies, and what's being asked here is, is bona fide and legitimate. But I also want to provide the empirical information to suggest, or to show, or to reflect what is perceived, and that is that perhaps we're taking greater load on the backs of the property taxpayers in this community than some of our surrounding colleagues, and that the provincial government, if not the federal government, should be respecting that and providing the additional funding to take that burden off the backs of the property taxpayers in this community. I just want to highlight that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item ten again, please. Item eleven, and I know, Counselor Jackson, I got you down, and Counselor Clark. I thought you, you had already, but you had already emailed me saying you would like to speak to it. Okay, but Counselor Clark actually asked first, so who do we want to go? Counselor Clark, you changed in first? Counselor Clark asked.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the folks who, we have kind of our own snow angel program in Stony Creek, it's called SOS, Senior's Outrage Service, was originally implemented, or founded by Bill Mitchell, he's, he passed away in October this year, but it's still carried on today. They have over, just shy of 400 clients, so they drive people to the doctors of-
So they drive people to their doctor's appointments, but they also have snow blowers. And so they go out and clear people's driveways, seniors specifically who can't do it themselves. So they're quite busy and they raise the funds to purchase the snow blowers themselves. There's no money coming from the city at all. We don't fund them in any way, shape, or form. They have many volunteers. As a matter of fact, they're looking for three or four more volunteers this year. It's a great group of guys. If anyone's interested in doing some snow blowing or driving folks to their appointments, just call 905-664-3393. But I wanted to thank them because every time it comes up that we're talking about snow angels and the cost to run the snow angel program, they want to point out very clearly that they do it on their own by just raising their funds on their own, and they're keen on doing it in their community. It's getting more challenging as more and more people are aging and finding it difficult to shovel the snow, but we're proud of them. They do a great job and they're, everyone admires them in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Agreed. Councillor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. And typically, I wouldn't speak to an information report that's only here tonight to be received. This is about the snow angels. But what Councillor Clark just said adds further to some of the frustration I'm experiencing on this program when a particular area of our city literally doesn't ask for any taxpayer money and volunteers are there at the disposal to help the people in need with snow clearing. And here we are with $100,000 program, and we're not getting close to matching the number of clients that every year register and can be eligible to have their driveway approaches, city sidewalk cleared of snow. Now, I want to first of all thank Councillor Sam Marula. About seven years ago, he came up with this terrific idea of a snow angels program. It would benefit, obviously, the homeowners, especially those that are hanging on to stay in their homes, such as the widows, widowers, the elderly, those with medical conditions that don't want to sell but can't just physically do the work anymore, some of the disabled members of our community. There might be a single parent with a number of small children. Simply that category and groups of people, that's what the intent of this wonderful noble program, Madam Deputy Mayor, was for. Something's been amiss over the six years. When I read the latest information report, in terms of, I'll quickly say it on the graphic here, 2009, 461 clients, only 172 matched of 461. The following year, 497 clients needed the service, only 206 matched. Following year, 569 needed the service desperately, only 238 matched. And matched being for those viewing by cable 14 or live stream, that's matching a volunteer to that particular homeowner, that particular location for snow clearing. Couple of years ago, 519 clients needed the service, only 240 matched. Last year, 463 needed it, only 123 matched. This is a significant amount of dollars. I've been a big supporter of this program. I bought into Councillor Marula's vision to help that group of our citizenry, the demographic that is growing. And it's not declining. So there's greater need out there. And we have contracted over these years Volunteer Hamilton, a wonderful organization, does a lot of great work in our community. But I'll tell you, folks, there's a disconnect somewhere, and I am not happy. In fact, there are times when I, snowstorms don't know the hours of the day or the days of the week, Madam Deputy Mayor. Believe it or not, there's been times when snowstorms have hit the last couple of years on weekends. I couldn't get a hold of anyone. I've had to call management, and management has been so kind to send out one of the employees of the city to get over to the situation I brought to their attention because that widow couldn't get to her medical appointment the next morning because of a three-foot drift in the driveway. And staff through Bill Atanis, one of our directors, and Erica Brimley have been absolutely wonderful in trying to fill the void individually. But the program should be clicking on all cylinders. And when you're only getting a third to a half of the clients matched for 100 grand, it doesn't send out a good message in the community. Today, we've had one of our best philanthropists in the city. We all received his email, Chris Eklund, saying he's more than happy to donate equipment to provide his own resources because he believes in this program. We got a great in-house program called Helping Hands. And Madam Deputy Mayor, maybe for the future, and whoever's on council a year and a half from now, going into the 14, 15 winter season, I think all options need to be explored. I'm going to support this to get us through this winter season now because time is of the essence. I don't believe we could curtail, halt the program at this time and try to quickly come up with something over Christmas when this is our last official council meeting barring an emergency. But Madam Deputy Mayor, whoever's here a year, year, 15 months from now, we've got to explore, possibly giving a portion of that money to maybe a contractor in the community, give him the list of 500 locations that have all been approved, and he could take his own equipment and maybe for a fraction of the 100 grand, Madam Deputy Mayor, clear those driveway approaches and the city sidewalks. Maybe we give a portion of the 100 grand to our Helping Hands division. I'm not here to disparage anyone, but something's amiss with this program, and I've waited patiently. And it was supposed to, lastly, Madam Deputy Mayor, get our young people involved in the community, get students involved, get that young person down the road, lives 10 houses away from that disabled person, that they could maybe sign up for the program help, maybe towards young people in their classes, their co-ops, gain credits for community service. All I've heard every year is, "Councillor, we're going to ramp up the advertise, we're going to ramp, we're going to knock on doors in the heist." It hasn't materialized for whatever reason. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, thanks for your indulgence. I've gone on a little longer. I'm going to support getting this through this winter, but I will not support it in this structure moving forward in future years. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Jackson. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And just to clarify, when it was firstly, when it was first introduced, it was based on a premise of simply matching volunteers with those that were in need of the service. And I believe at the time, we went through an RFP process and Volunteer Hamilton was successful in that bid. And I too, I'm disappointed with the numbers, there's no question about it. If you look at contracting out to a contractor, sidewalk by sidewalk, particularly now with the infrequency of snowstorms, it probably wouldn't go nowhere near $100,000. So there, I think, one thing that I've noticed is that there's universal support for the premise or the idea. The execution of the program definitely needs to be reassessed to a point where we need to perhaps either look at it to align ourselves or partner with a for-profit scenario or somehow encourage Volunteer Hamilton to basically pull up their socks because it can't, it's not sustainable as it presently stands. And I think everyone agrees with that. Having said that, we need to execute it better and we need a plan of action accordingly on a go-forward basis, which I look forward to seeing in the very near future. And I think staff's been put on notice accordingly, and they will follow up, not only monitoring this year's activity, but also where we head down the road on with this program. Because I can assure you that the hundreds of people that are receiving the service not only are deserving and needy of the service, but it's a noble service and one we should continue to provide. On that note, I just want to thank everyone for their time.
Thank you. I have Councillors Whitehead and Powers. Councillor Whitehead?
Madam Chair, could I move the motion now that the city take over cleaning all sidewalks? No? It's an issue that we've dealt with. I think, yeah, Merry Christmas. I believe there's only three communities in all Ontario now that do not do sidewalks. We're one of them. All Ontario. Our population's getting older and certainly health concerns and so forth. At some point, I think we will be revisiting the issue. I think the last time I checked was $34 a household to do every sidewalk in the city. So it is a concern, a growing concern, my word, when you look at the number of seniors that you have. But when I look at this particular angel program, which is noble for sure, it's working out to 206 people. I mean, if you took 100,000 divided by 300, you're getting about $333 per client for four, you know, average of four major snowfalls. So you're looking at, I guess it's about $80, $90 per visit. I mean, you can hire professionals to do more than what we're doing now with that $100,000. So clearly, this service is not meeting the expectations. I think it's late, and the last thing I want to do is pull it now because we don't want to rob the ones that are currently registered. But it really does need a greater look on what is the best model to provide this service and those waiting lists going forward. Because we'll never get to the 482, I think I saw on the list. We're servicing around 206, 172, which is not even close when you talk with the dollars. So I hope that we do a complete review on this program.
Thank you, Councillor Whitehead. Councillor Powers, please. Last speaker.
It's not only a review of the process, but it also comes from where the source is. I mean, just like in Stony Creek, we have a program run by Dundas Community Services. This year, totally undersourced from the standpoint of young people who are prepared to volunteer their time. I mean, every one of them to graduate high school requires 40 hours of volunteer. I mean, what better than contributing back to your community and getting basically a chip for doing that? The last word I heard was they had four volunteers for the winter in Dundas, where in the past, which is a fraction of what they've had in the past. So not only a review of the project, but also maybe this is a cooperative effort between the various school boards and ourselves in order to ensure that the people who need the assistance do get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Powers. And Mayor Bettina, please.
I see Paul Johnson listening intently. Maybe it's a neighborhood program, divvy up the money into the neighborhoods. So perhaps, you know, informally, Paul, you might put some thought to that.
Councillor Clark, second time. Councillor Marula, please.
If the city, and I don't know who would do it, but find out what the requirements are, you'll find out that in Stony Creek, we use snow blowers and the gentlemen, they're in their 50s, 55, there's no snow shoveling going on. My understanding, the snow angel ones, they don't like the snow blowers because they're afraid of liability. The city's afraid of liability, and every time you try to do something to move the system further, there's more roadblocks put up. You can't shovel that many driveways with shovels. With the snow blowers, these guys do a lot of driveways in a night. So it may be something as simple as making sure that everybody's covered in case there's some injury or something, and then you'll have more snow blowers made available to them. But currently, my understanding is that that seems to be one of the issues that they have.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. Councillor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And since the issue of the sidewalk removal came up back in 2008, I did have a motion passed to have the issue reviewed. We came back and I have the report right in front of me. With 2,329 kilometers' worth of sidewalks, this is 2008 numbers, it would cost $2.9 million for sidewalk removal of snow. When you incorporate all sidewalks and paved walkways, it was estimated that it would cost $3.2 million. So at that time, although I did push for it, we deemed it unaffordable. I believe those are 2008 numbers, which obviously would increase. Just keep that in mind when we start talking about universal sidewalk.
And no driveways involved either?
No driveways.
No driveways. Thank you. That's number 11. Number 12, please. Thank you. Number 13, excuse me, number 13. Councillor Jackson?
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, this is about the extension of the service contract for management of the Hamilton Farmers Market. I'm not going to go on, I'm not going to belabor this. We heard last week the urgency from a couple of the delegates that came in, longstanding history at the market. We suddenly, last week after the urgency, after many months of pleas and requests, we heard staff say that they could hopefully accommodate some of these requests as soon as possible. We've done one tonight with the 0% freeze on their rentals. And I've heard Councillor Farr, which I greatly appreciate as Chair of the Market Subcommittee, along with, I believe, Councillor Collins and Pasuta that are on the committee, they're going to meet tomorrow to hopefully go over the validated parking issue and the signage issue, which staff have said in the last week, they're going to work feverishly on to try to bring some resolution and some options forward. This here tonight is basically saying to renew the current management contract for another six months. I just want to be record as opposed to this because in my humble opinion, the contract's up at the end of this month. This would be a golden opportunity. I think I heard overwhelming sentiment last week at GIC, Madam Deputy Mayor, to provide the stallholders with their request of a hybrid governance model that would be some stallholders, some members of council, some citizens at large. Let's turn it over to them. Let's be the landlord, continue to own it. Let's turn it over to them. We heard commitments and assurances publicly from the two speakers last week that between them have over 200 years of investment at the market and their families, that within two or three years, they could eliminate the $170,000 taxpayer subsidy, but it needs the new governance model. To renew the contract and the existing status quo ain't going to get us there at all. I'd rather just let the contract end this month, which it legally could do, not renew it, and let's in the next few weeks, even starting tomorrow into early next year, let's give the stallholders what they want, let's give them a chance. They've been requesting it. Trust me, I've worn some scars from them over the years. I know a number of my colleagues have a little bit of ill feeling. I get that. Again, I've worn a number of scars from them over the years because of what they felt when they weren't being listened to. And I kept saying, "Well, look, staff and council feel we're doing everything we can by the $9 million investment in the market overall, including relocation costs." So, Madam Deputy Mayor, for me to support extending the status quo in the current contract is just basically flying in the face of what we heard last week. I want to be record as opposed. Thanks, Madam Deputy.
Thank you, Councillor Jackson. Councillor Collins?
Thanks, Madam Chairman. And along the same lines, my concern through, in reading the report, and I'm not a member of the committee, so unfortunately, I wasn't there for the discussion or the debate. I think we all know that, and we would all agree, that the status quo isn't working here. So changes are on the horizon, and we would know as well, as part of this whole discussion, that the largest, the bulk of the savings that will come with whatever model we choose will come from the costs related to the employees that are attached to the farmers' market budget. So when I read this report, I was a little concerned that if, in fact, the committee decides to shift gears rather quickly, let's say it's a month or two months, do we have the ability then to sever the contract on short notice and not have to be, not have to pay, I guess, the full six months employment contract? So if there's anything there that's confidential, then I'd certainly move to go in camera at the appropriate time. If that's something that can be offered to us in open session, then I would appreciate the answer.
Joanne, I would like to respond to you.
Through you, Madam Chair. We'd be subject to the terms of the Employment Standards Act in terms of providing adequate notice of ending the employment, which I believe is about two weeks old.
Councillor Collins?
Okay. And was there a Plan B presented to the committee? Again, the recommendation here is the one, I believe, that was submitted to the committee. I don't know what options were provided in camera, and I'm not certain what staff can share with us out of camera as it relates to personnel. But is there a Plan B to consider if, in fact, the majority of us feel that there are savings to be had almost immediately, as was referenced by Councillor Jackson?
Joanne?
Through you, Madam Chair. We did not present a Plan B when we went to committee. We weren't, I guess, well enough prepared for that. Subsequent to Emergency and Community Services Committee, I've had a couple of conversations with Terry Quinn, who's the director responsible for the market. It's absolutely not our preference that we not renew the contract. That being said, we would have to probably triage it between Terry and whoever else we could pull together. So we'd have to rely on Terry's expertise and that of Sapphire Singh, who's our marketing, is our marketing person in the market, and we'd have to rely on our facilities, partners at Public Works to help us as well. So we'd have to just triage it.
All right. I appreciate the comments and the, sorry, the answers that were provided. I'm not in a position to support it tonight for another six months. I was actually anticipating at the end of the contract, as was referenced by Councillor Jackson, that there would be some savings on the horizon. Although I do note, as we all know, that we're still in that period of transition, and we have yet to make a decision. I feel like six months is a long time and kind of locks us
I feel like six months is a long time and kind of locks us into some savings that, at least in part, could be accrued through the 2014 calendar year. So those are my comments right now.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you. We all heard the delegations, as Counselor Jackson said. And I understand the Farmers Market Committee's meeting tomorrow, and I understand that John Hurtel is presenting the long-awaited report about the governance of the market, and that there's three options in the report. One is to continue status quo, one is to issue an RFP to outsource it, and the third is a hybrid consisting of what the stall holders recommended, a committee of three citizens, three members of council, and three stall holders. And I think it'd be appropriate to refer, similar to what we did with the parking issue, refer this matter over to that committee for tomorrow. Because once they hear that report from staff and they make a decision of which governance model they want to use, they know how long to extend this contract. Because I sense that they want to move a lot quicker than six months on a change. If we're going out to an RFP for a private sector operator, it might take six months. But I heard a preference at the last GIC meeting to a hybrid model was the preference, and that's something they could put in place fairly quickly, I would think, within a month. And so at the appropriate time, in fact, I'd like to move this matter to be referred to the Farmers Market Committee to have them make a decision on the extension, if there is one, and if so, how long.
Thank you. And I think Joanne would like to answer that. Refer this to the Farmers Market Subcommittee?
Through you, Madam Chair. The only problem with that is that we don't have another council meeting at which to approve or not the recommendation here, so I'd be stuck.
Counselor Ferguson?
Okay. But I would suspect the Farmers Market Committee would be able to issue something on an interim basis. They may decide they're going to go to the hybrid, they're going to go January the first, and they're perfectly happy with letting the contract expire. That decision would be something that would be workable. If they decide to do an extension for one month, I would suspect the staff would be able to go back to the current contract person and say, are you prepared to stay on it next month? If not, we'll have to triage, as Joanne said, and backfill with another staff member to get through that period. But I'm not sure what John is going to recommend. I'm not sure how long the transition period is, and I'd like to know that before I make a decision. So rather than simply voting no, I'd like to refer it to that committee and empower them if they want extended another month until the council meeting, the January council meeting, and you get ratification on it, give them that authority. Or two weeks, whatever the length of time is. Rather than, because you put it over six months, and they decide to go to a hybrid model and decide not to keep this position, you know, we've got to approve contract, we have to pay the person for six months, and that doesn't sound reasonable, in my view.
Joanne or Mike?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm not sure, through the clerks.
I can't hear, please.
I'm not sure whether counsel, whether the terms of the agreement was is that we have to have any extensions to that contract approved by council. That's been in the previous reports. I don't know that that, and the only option I could have is if you would approve the extension up to one month at this point, which would just allow the conversation to happen tomorrow at the Subcommittee and then make a decision from there. I don't know of any other option. So the suggestion was to...
Would the incumbent agree to a one-month extension, do you think?
Staff person with that contract, would they agree to an extension on one month?
Through you, Madam Chair. I suspect that the incumbent would, but I can't guarantee that. If that's not the case, then we'd have to go to Plan B.
Okay. At the appropriate time, come back to me then. I'll put a motion that we amend this to have a one-month extension and to allow us to assess the recommendation coming out of the Farmers Market Committee and then deal with the matter again in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCady?
Madam Chair, that was exactly what I was going to say as well. It's, council does have to approve this, so it has to come back here, so we have to make a decision tonight. The sense is there will be changes in the management style of the market, so it's just a question of timing tonight. Not certainly what we're talking about is the timing of the existing person. So we have to make that decision tonight, given this is the last council meeting before the contract is up December 31st. So I think certainly the one-month minimum, and we've got that two-week notice for the contract that we heard from Joanne earlier in response to Counselor Collins's question. So I think that's probably the way to go, to get us to the point where we've got more direction, more clear direction on this.
Okay.
So just a timing issue. We need to make that decision tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Oh, am I hearing the suggestion that we believe we could hand over, lock, stock, and barrel the control of the farmers market to a hybrid board and get all those documents in place in 30 days? That would be a record. Why wouldn't we set up, why wouldn't we set up the contract in such a manner that it would be up until six months? And then if it ends at a month, fine, if you get it pulled off in a month, then it's done. If it ends in two months, then that's what it takes. If it ends in three months, then it takes three months. That's what we've done in the past. Up to six months. I don't think it says up to six months. I think it says six months.
Counselor Clark, were you looking for an answer, or...
No, I'm just questioning why we would presuppose that this group of stall owners that we've had so much difficulty with, we'd be able to come into an agreement with in 30 days for a hybrid governance structure? Like that, given on the past, unless there's been a remarkable conversion on the road to Damascus, I can't see how that's going to happen. So you need to plan the contingency that is going to take longer.
Thank you. Counselor DeVal.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We discussed this at committee, and I believe that, I understand there's an urgency and the Subcommittee wants to get moving on some of the issues of the farmers market. But because of the transition, it was my understanding we could extend the contract. It would be six months. But if there was a plan in place to put it, say, in a month or a month and a half, then that person could be let go. There was no additional cost to us, didn't have to wait out the six-month contract. It was just a six-month period that they have to, they can work in. If they do it in a month, then we can let the employee go. If they do it in two weeks, then they let the employee go. It was just a safeguard. So through you to Joanne, has that changed?
No, through you, Madam Chair. That's the way the contract currently reads, so we can terminate at any point in time. So although the wording in the recommendation doesn't say up to six months, that's within the terms of the contract. Any moment in time, we can terminate it, and all we have to do is follow the requirements of the Employment Standards Act.
Well, thank you for that. So I was clear that, and I think we discussed that, what would happen in that transition time, so that it gives Joanne some type of protection. And unless the Subcommittee do their work, and hoping that they can speed up the process to make the necessary changes as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Well, I think my biggest concern is, is there a poison environment? And is the current person there part of that issue? And so by extending it, does that assist...
I think you're treading here, sir.
I don't know if it is. I don't suggest, I'm saying that that is a possibility. And to me, when we hear from the farmers market and say they don't even see the market person in the plant, that concerns me.
Now we're going down to personnel issues. I'm sorry, Counselor Whitehead.
Okay. So the point being, I think there's a lot of other issues that everyone's skirting around that is not being addressed because we're in this format. And that's concerning, because I think there is other issues that need to be addressed, probably in camera. And so I'm going to ask this question to the clerk. Can we authorize the Farmers Market or Subcommittee, as a council, can we give them the power? Can we endorse their decision today relative to any decisions they deal with tomorrow?
Deputy Mayor, no, I do not believe you can do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Thank you. Counselor Farr?
That, reiterated by the previous speaker, and that idea that we have a new mandate, and it's very, as the Farmers Market Subcommittee as Chair, and it's very limited in scope. In fact, we'll probably cross the boundaries on several occasions tomorrow. But, you know, legal will be there to assist us and guide us, and IDA will be there, our clerk, to assist us and guide us, and all of our staff associated or indirectly associated to the farmers market. Anyway, to the point of what's before us, 13, what's preventing us, and I have to apologize, I think I missed my first Emergency Community Services meeting on Monday, so I wasn't at the meeting. So, but just what's wrong with the quick amendment on A after the word "market" for, after those words, "up to," insert that, an additional six months, and then we're good to go? And I think that, you know, what's before us is the best option, already knowing that there's a two-week notice issue anyway. So whenever we get to the point in the next half a year where we carry forth on whatever of the three models, as will be debated tomorrow, based on a very extensive and thorough report by Mr. Hurtel, then we're good to go. So I would amend accordingly, seconded by Counselor Clark, that following the words in Part A, "farmers market for," I would insert the words "up and to," and then an additional six-month period.
Okay. That is your amendment on this 13A so far, and I still have Counselor Powers on that amendment.
Thank you. That was going to be my suggestion, and I think the fact that you have, speaking in favor, you have your market meeting tomorrow. It would come to ECS and ENCS in January, and council gets it the end of January. So there's three opportunities to ideally sort this out and that and move ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Partridge, last speaker.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I too would very much support that. I think we do need to have that flexibility with the transition. We need to see that report from John Hurtel and get a clear understanding of what the options are. And, you know, it may be that one of them is to still go out for that RFP and just see what stirs up, what comes in from it. So I'm not comfortable, you know, not supporting it and doing what else. But the other thing I just want to comment on, the comments about the current market manager, it's my understanding that there is a very positive relationship that's happening in there right now, that there aren't any issues. And I just think we need to make that clear, that, you know, this has nothing to do with the personalities of who's there. They're doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge. I have a note here to go back to Counselor Ferguson for the one-month extension. We've got now a suggestion to go up to an additional six months.
Yes, someone else made a motion, even though he spoke to it.
I agree.
He accepted it, so...
I know, but it's my last moment tonight.
That's fine. I'm prepared to accept the amendment.
Thank you. So moved by Counselor Farr and seconded by Counselor Clark, that Part A reads of the Hamilton Farmers Market for up to an additional six months. All those in favor on the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. All those, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. All those opposed? I've got two. I've got Counselor Jackson and Counselor Whitehead opposed, please. Thank you. Sorry, sir. On number 13, as amended?
Carried.
Opposed? Counselor Whitehead opposed? Thank you. Counselor Whitehead, I understand you have an amendment for item 14.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor DeVal, that the item 14, Emergency and Community Services Committee Report 13010, respecting the structure within the community and emergency services department citywide, this is a housekeeping amendment, it's in front of everyone, so I don't need to read it, I don't think.
Does everybody have it in front of them? Okay, just give it two seconds, and then we can go with the motions. And this is seconded by?
Counselor DeVal.
Counselor DeVal. So moved by Counselor Whitehead, seconded by Counselor DeVal. The housekeeping motion is in front of you. Oh, she, he did the good side first. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Oh, Counselor Jackson?
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, the revised 14, and I want to thank Counselor Whitehead for bringing this forward. The B part, since we just had the discussion about the Hamilton Farmers Market, this says now the oversight of that, be transferred to the Corporate Services Department. So that would be technically under Acting General Manager Mike Zagaric. And the Market Subcommittee then will have no particular participation or input into that. If we approve that here tonight, is that my understanding? Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to Acting GM Mike Zagaric.
Do you know, Mike, or was this a surprise?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I understood the restructuring. I was just reading the motion. Sorry. Yeah. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the farmers market would fall under the leadership of John Hurtel within Corporate Services.
So that then dovetails into the Hurtel report that will be appearing tomorrow at the Market Subcommittee meeting. So this all makes sense moving forward. Thank you very much, Mike. Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. On number 14, as amended?
Carried.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead, as your last duty of being the chairperson, may I have a motion on the report? Microphone, please.
And moved by myself and my colleague and mountain colleagues, Scott DeVal and Counselor Jackson, I can't do both, so I have to do DeVal, sorry, Counselor Jackson, that the 10th report of the Emergency Community Services Committee be adopted and the amendment as amended and the information section received.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Carried.
Thank you.
Counselor Jackson, may I have a motion, please, to rise and report?
Mr. Mayor, you may. Moved by myself and seconded by Ward 7 Counselor Scott DeVal, my one colleague on the mountain, that the committee, the whole, rise and report.
Members of council, before we continue on, Linda Schuker has been waiting patiently, listening eagerly to our debates.
And thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Oh, right, the deputy mayor.
Great president of the ball.
All right. So Counselor Johnson and I would like to invite Linda Schuker to come forward with that little envelope that she has in her hands.
Well, I apologize for being late.
Right up to the mic.
I apologize for being late. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to do this check presentation. But importantly, I want to thank Counselor Johnson for being a strong supporter of the Winona Peach Festival. Because, you know, actually, on those three days of festival, Brenda is my employee. She actually became, becomes a team member and a team player, and she works hard. So I really appreciate your support. And in addition to that, I want to thank the rest of you as the counselors for supporting the Winona Peach Festival in many ways that you do, and working cooperatively and jointly with us and moving on into the future. All those funds that we raise go back out into the community. They go into the community to help kids, service groups, churches, schools, and what have you. So that's the important thing, to make our community a better thing. And so with that being said, we're celebrating our 47th anniversary this year. So I hope that we can continue to work in the future with the City of Hamilton. So with that being said, I stand here on behalf of the Board of Directors to present a check of $13,000 to Mayor Bob.
Thank you so much.
And that's to help pay off our loan that we have with the City of Hamilton and that we pay with it in due diligence every year. But the most important thing is that it continues our relationship with the City of Hamilton. So I thank you very much for that. And on behalf of my family and whatever, I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
I know that Linda's not very comfortable doing this kind of thing, but I really wanted to point out to you that this year that the Peach Festival actually received and donated back to the food bank over 4,300 pounds of food and over $1,200 worth of money, and also sold over 27,000 sundaes. So just to let you know, all that money, as Linda said, goes right back into it, and thank you to Counselor Powers, there would have been less than that. So thanks again, Linda, and she's right, for three days, I got to listen to her. So this is my time now. Thank you very much.
I don't pay her, though. Trust me, I don't pay her.
No double-dipping. No double-dipping. So I'm going to do the ceremonial presentation of the check to Mike Zagaric. Now we're at a motions, and Counselor Marula, do you wish to present your motion respecting public demonstrations?
Thank you. I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Mayor. It's before us, and this is a very simple request that came from a community grassroots group, and presently, in speaking with Anna Bradford, who assisted through legal in formulating this motion, we have a situation where if people are protesting on City Hall, they're more than welcome to do so, and there's no charge associated with it. However, if people are required after hours or to access the facilities, there is a charge, a nominal charge that's put forward as a result of employee costs. When I ask staff about what that cost is, generally is about $3,000 a year, so from my perspective, I think for that $3,000 a year, it would be an in-kind scenario for those that want to protest or want to use the facilities, being that it is a public building, that we would allow the facility or the facility to have access without any charge. Having said that, if somebody's having an organized protest where they're actually providing beverages or food, then there would be a seat application that they would need to follow through with as a result of public health issues and other liability issues. This doesn't in any way take away their responsibility for liability insurance in the event that they are pursuing it, but it does provide them with access to the washroom. So through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could just have Anna Bradford expand upon and confirming what the actual dollar value of this in-kind suggestion would be, it would be greatly appreciated. Anna not here? Okay, well, if somebody else maybe, who's? I thought Anna was here.
Just move it.
Okay, so anyway, let's move, myself, seconded by Counsel Collins.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, a motion on a liquor license application.
Motion's withdrawn, thank you.
Counselor Farr, do you wish to present your motion respecting parking strategy?
Yep, as per the pre-Christmas parking strategies throughout many of our BIAs, it is before us, and it relates to the King West BIA for the time remaining of the program.
All in favor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel McCadie.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's carried. Counselor Jackson, a motion to amend, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by Ward Eight Counselor Terry Whitehead. Amendment to information, Item GIC Report 13-024, tax support user fees, was when I was Deputy Mayor, Carolyn Biggs Legislative Assistant was good enough to catch this, Fire Chief's going to hold off on passing any costs on to homeowners who have had fires to work with the Insurance Bureau of Canada, it's just housekeeping, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Notices of motion, Counsel Ferguson on Police Services Act.
Yes, I have a notice of motion, which if you like, we can waive the rules, okay.
All in favor of waiving the rules?
Carried.
Okay, I'll be happy to read the motion out for the viewers at home, and this has to deal with the issue we're having in Hamilton, and quite frankly, across the province, dealing with the suspension, police officers who are suspended, who may stretch the process out in order to continue to collect full pay, and right now, the Police Services Act clearly states that any officer who is under suspension must receive full pay, and what I've done is worked with Chief DeCarr on this, and the solicitors, or the chief solicitor, to get as close as I can to the resolution that the Police Chiefs Association have passed on to the province, and looking support now from municipal councils. So, it's moved by myself and seconded by fellow board member Terry Whitehead. Whereas the Police Services Act imposes on municipal council the responsibility of establishing the overall budget for the Police Service Board, and whereas the Police Services Act requires the Chief of Police to maintain discipline with respect to organizations, and whereas public confidence in our police service is dependent upon maintaining the trust of the public, and whereas the maintaining of that trust is dependent upon all police officers adhering to the highest standards of conduct, and whereas we recognize and support that the law must protect police officers in the good faith performance of their duties, and where it is never intended that such protection would shield police officers from the consequences of serious misconduct not related to the performance of said duties, and whereas the City Hamilton citizens have paid through their taxes the ongoing salaries of suspended officers while they face serious criminal and Police Service Act charges, therefore be it resolved that the City Hamilton call upon the Government of Ontario to amend the Police Services Act to allow for the suspension of pay for police officers charged with Serious Criminal Code of Canada, Controlled Drug and Substance Act, and other federal offenses or serious misconduct under the Police Services Act not related to the performance of duty or in compliance with the OFAH office, and Counsel Powers has asked me to add to that that a copy be sent to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. So that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
And Counsel Collins, are you going to speak to that?
Just going to add that I'm so happy that Counsel Ferguson has brought it forward, this is one of those issues that the public is seeking substantial change, and they've been crying out for it every time there's an incident and a case and a file makes its way into the newspaper. We get calls immediately asking why we're supporting this, and we have to go through the whole long explanation in terms of the history of this file, how the police chief feels about it, how our board has addressed it, how others feel about it across the province, and that essentially, this is one of those issues that's not resolved here around this table. So I'm certainly glad that Counsel Ferguson has formally brought this to the table, because it's certainly long overdue in terms of the changes that most people in the community fully support. I mean, this is one of those ones where there's almost near unanimity, and those issues don't come up too often.
Okay, Counsel Partridge?
Yes, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Counsel Ferguson for bringing this forward. You know, I can't tell you how many emails and phone calls and people coming up to me in Fortino's when I'm doing my grocery shopping on Saturdays, and just this issue in particular has just ticked people off to no end, and they wanted it resolved, and, you know, hopefully this will be the start of going down that road, of working with AMO, of working with the province, and addressing it, so I just wanted to personally say thank you very much to Counsel Ferguson.
And Counsel Whitehead, and Counsel Clark?
Yeah, I want to indicate that as far as morale and amongst many of the great police officers we have in this community, they certainly don't like how it's been reflected on them relative to this particular case, or the one particular case that's been very topical in the last while with the Dole case. So I just want to make clear that this has impacted not only the broader tax base, but the very people that rely on providing the services in the community, they've felt it as well. The other area of concern I have when we deal with this issue is that, I mean, the Dole case, basically, he retired, no jurisdiction, it's done. The other issue, of course, is, the other issue, of course, is we've had cases where a finding was found, the officer was terminated, but the length of time that he got paid for doing no service at all for the community was never paid back, or no ability to pay back to the community, even though he was let go, and there was that lapse time, so certainly I have some concerns, and the Police Service Act, without question, is broken, and there's a number of areas of amendment, this is one.
Counsel Clark?
Point of order? I was remiss in not pointing out to members of council, and I got the advice from the solicitor, that we should not mention names in this resolution, and so I apologize, I should have laid that out earlier, and so just for the place of question.
All right, there is no name in the resolution, Counsel Clark?
Yeah, and I thank the council for that last comment, because I probably would have crossed that line. This may or may not help solve the issue, I've been watching it for a long time, and I think one of the most challenging things and most frustrating things is the length of a police services hearing, and how long it gets adjourned and recessed, and it just goes on and on forever, whereas in common law, and we dealt with litigations, if someone starts playing games that way, the judge makes a ruling that the next trial date is preemptory, and they'll do it with or without them, whereas in the Police Services Act, those service hearing officers apparently don't have that authority, so it just goes on forever, as long as the lawyer comes up with an excuse. So this will most likely deal with some of the issues with officers receiving money, but the length of the hearings are incredibly long, and they cost us a fortune to adjudicate, and that has to be resolved also, and it simply changes in rules of order for the police services hearings.
So no further comments on the motion, all in favor?
Carried.
None opposed? Hearing none? We go to notices. Further notice, Counsel Farr?
I'm going to look as well with the urgency here to waive the rules, Mr. Mayor. This is, I can read the notice of motion, and then we can decide from there. It's with respect to 18 to 22 King Street East and 24, 28 King Street East in Hamilton, whereas the City Council agreed not to designate 18, 22, 24, 28 King Street East, quote "at this time," end quote, that was January 23, 2013, with the understanding that the permit holder would request in writing that the demolition permit for 18, 22 King Street East Hamilton be revoked, and whereas, building permits for the demolition of the existing buildings at 18, 22 King Street East Hamilton and 24, 28 King Street East Hamilton have been issued and remain in effect, you could also call those demo permits, whereas the buildings located at 18, 22 King Street East and 24, 28 King Street East Hamilton meet the criteria specified in Ontario Regulation 9 slash 06.
Let me interrupt, Counsel, before you get to the "therefore," be it resolved that. We correctly proceed, you can't speak to the notice of motion, I understand what's going on here, so I think we need to waive the rules to allow you to finish your dissertation, so we may have gotten, okay, so who moved it? Jackson, Collins, all in favor of waiving the rules, that's carried, and you're opposed to waiving the rules. What else opposed? Opposed, opposed, opposed. So what's the count now? Those opposed, hands up. One, two, three, four, five, six. Point of order, what is your point of order?
Mr. Mayor, when someone has a notice of motion, they're allowed to read the notice of motion, and that's what Counsel Farr was doing. If the full notice of motion is read, counselors might have a better sense of the content, so, I mean, clerks can correct me, but that's what he was doing, he was just reading it, right?
I understand that.
You're allowed to do that as a notice of motion.
Thanks for your point, and now we're going to continue on. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I'm still confused, because council already made a decision on this, so I would assume we would have had a need-for-reconsideration motion.
Yeah, let me ask the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, through you, back in January, council passed a motion that read that City Council agrees not to designate 18 to 22, 24, and 28 King Street at this time, so it wasn't a decision to not designate or designate, it was just indicating that we're prepared to do anything at that point in time.
Oh, that's the famous "at this time."
Which, you know what I think of that, "at this time"?
So, I'm in the hands of the clerk on this, because it's a, well, okay, we, on the motion to waive the rules, which is before us and what we're speaking to, could I see the hands again, those in favor of waiving the rules? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and those opposed, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and I will vote on the side of waiving the rules. So the rules are now waived, and now the motion is before us.
And I won't start from the top, Mr. Mayor, I'll just go from the third, whereas the buildings located, and thanks for all the good questions, I asked them all prior to tonight, and whereas the buildings located at 18, 22 King Street East and 24, 28 King Street East Hamilton meet the criteria specified in Ontario Regulation 9 slash 06, including but not limited to historical associations with the growth and commercial prosperity of the City of Hamilton in the 19th century, 18-22 King Street East was constructed circa 1840 and occupied by Archibald and Thomas C. Kerr, dry goods wholesalers, 24 King Street East was constructed in 1875-6 for James A. Skinner, crockery merchant, later occupied by Minden's Ladieswear, and 28 King Street East was constructed in 1874 for William H. Glasgow &amp; Sons Furriers.
Counselor, can I, just in the interest of time, get to the "thereas" of your motion?
Final whereas, very good, Mr. Mayor, I'll skip the second two bullets on the history, and I appreciate that everybody looked at this in advance. And whereas, the Hamilton Municipal Heritage Committee advised Planning Council and Council in January 2013 that the properties are of cultural heritage value or interest sufficient to be designated, and whereas subsection 29 bracket 1 of the Ontario Heritage Act enables the council of a municipality to designate by bylaw property that is of cultural heritage value or interest if such properties satisfies the prescribed criteria in Ontario Regulation 9 slash 06, and whereas subsection 33 parentheses 1 and subsection 34 parentheses 1 of the Ontario Heritage Act provide for a process to manage alterations to property and demolition of removal of buildings or structures designated, the Ontario Heritage Act, therefore be it resolved that the notice of intention to designate 18-22 King Street East Hamilton attached as Appendix A be approved, and that the notice of intention to designate 24 and 28 King Street East Hamilton attached as Appendix B be approved, and that the City Solicitor be directed to take appropriate action to designate 18-22 King Street East and 24, 28 King Street East Hamilton under Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act. And, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of what is before us, quite obviously, there is urgency, and I appreciate that we managed to move this, at least approach moving it here this evening, residents, taxpayers, investors into our core, new and old, I think are concerned that our gore may very well potentially have a gaping hole of lost heritage, that there is unfortunately no plan after a great deal of consultation with many meetings with myself, with staff who are here tonight. If you have any questions, our heritage planner is here, our director of planning is here, and I appreciate them hanging in as long as they have to address this important issue here tonight. I appreciate their assistance in helping me put together what's before us tonight as well, as well as Edward John, my colleague, Counsel McCaddie as well. But through all this consultation, we were always hopeful that there would be a plan, that there would be a development plan. We were always vocal and worked on the same page, at least I did, with messaging early on that there would be a plan. It was originally a three-phase plan, and it was vetted between both parties, then it sort of changed, and it changed again, and now, still to this day, with a year into consults, a lot of staff time, a lot of energy, a lot of community input, we have, we're no further, we are without a development before staff, and we are unfortunately looking at a clock that's ticking on at least a portion of what is before us on gore, where the demolition permit expires in less than a month, hence this evening. Despite all of these efforts, I think we need to move, the most recent communication I've had with the folks who own these properties, I'm just not encouraged, unfortunately, and barring any fa wu forays moment during the holiday season, I just don't think we're going to have any opportunity to debate this anymore. We are where we're at, and it doesn't go past anybody around this table, I would hope, that, you know, we've been using words like seeking compromises for some time, and so right from that motion back in January, that was the first crisis, you'll recollect, and then the jaws of destruction appearing during the summertime when a lot of us were away, including myself, appearing on the back lot, another crisis, another emergency meeting, a lot of ups and a lot of downs, and we're in a position right now where there really are no more meetings, where we're tonight approving unanimously $1.1 million, unprecedented emotion this evening, in incentives without a development plan, pre-approved incentives, and the reaction initially by staff at that meeting where they asked, can you do that? We want assurances, and we provided assurances here this evening, and between the GIC approval and now, we hear again, another down, after another up, that it's just, it's not sufficient to the development, it's not sufficient to what they want to do. So, you know, I want to make it very clear that what it is, is a designation that provides a heritage permit process, that the process can still continue, that we can still have dialogue, that we can turn drawings into formal consultations, into development plans, and something very, very good can come of this, and the eligibility for $1.1 million is still And the eligibility for $1.1 million is still on the table. I think the big thing is, this is encouraging a coordination of our Planning Act. This is very key, and this is what motivated me throughout. And that is our objectives of our official plan and the downtown Hamilton secondary plan, that we're not rushing ahead to demolish without something in place to replace it. And so, that's why I've brought this forward with this sense of urgency, and I do appreciate the opportunity of presenting it as a motion here tonight, because otherwise, the consequences, unfortunately, I would predict, would not be good as it relates to the center of our city. Thank you.
Can I have a speaker's list? I have Counselor McCarty, Collins, Ferguson, Powers, Pearson, and myself on the list. Counselor McCarty.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And this has been an extremely difficult issue, I know, for Counselor Farr in the downtown. In the downtown, you're always struggling between, you know, protecting the heritage, conserving the heritage that we have down there, while at the same time wanting to support development and to see our downtown turn the corner and with new positive development. And that's really the dilemma that any Ward II counselor goes through in having to juggle those things. And in this case, the demolition permits were issued. None of us knew about them until they were out the door. That's the Ontario Building Code Act. It followed proper process, no question about it. But when we found out about the demolition permits, we said, you know, "Mr. Developer, is there any opportunity to work together on this?" And that's been months and months discussion following that. And you'll know that there's been public outrage on this issue, the potential loss of additional, you know, 1800s vintage buildings in the gore, in the center of our city, where Hamilton began as a city. And folks really want to see us conserve those or achieve some sort of adaptive reuse of those existing buildings. So, one of the things that was important during the discussions was, what condition are these buildings in? Can they be conserved? And if the answer was no, a guy like Counselor Farr is not going to say, "Stop everything, try and designate kind of thing" if the buildings themselves are not structurally sound. So, through the Heritage Department and working with Mr. Blanchard and the developer, it was agreed that a study would be undertaken to determine how strong these buildings are. Can they be conserved as they are today? Can they be adapted to a new development? In this term, we always use adaptive reuse. And the findings of that study, and Steve Robichaud can give you the details, or Megan House tonight, was that indeed the buildings are structurally supportable to redevelop as they are today, on the gore, right on the gore itself. And Mr. Blanchard, of course, in the past, had talked about a larger building behind the gore structure, and that's something that could occur as well. But the adaptive reuse could occur on the gore with 18 to 28 King Street East, as the motion talks about. So, that's important to know, because you don't want to be throwing monkey wrenches in if all you're doing is delaying, or if there's a development opportunity and you're throwing a monkey wrench. And that's not what Counselor Farr is about, or myself, or any of us, I wouldn't think. So, that's important to know. So, the opportunity to have a, or the concern of having a gap in the gore street wall, you know, right during the Pan Am Games, when Hamilton's trying to put its best face forward, was not a good option. We know that the developer has just taken down 20 Jackson Street next to us here, and it's a parking lot. That's not what we want to see in the downtown. I think bylaws investigating that right now, but we certainly don't want to see a parking lot right in the gore, where these buildings are, which, given the fact that we don't have a development application, we don't have any designs for what would actually go here, that's a real possibility, and none of us want to see that. So, I think it's really important to follow the whole evolution of this over about a 12 to 18-month period, and how Counselor Farr, I know, has met with the developers probably about a dozen times in total, and staff having additional meetings beyond that, to talk about the heritage features, the structural soundness of the building, agreeing to have a study done that would indicate, is it possible to redevelop or not? So, that's really why he's come to the position that he has. You know, if the developer had come forward with a development application, it would have been more helpful to see what actually is going in there, if they would have, you know, agreed with this study, the structural soundness, and moved ahead, that would have been helpful as well. But unfortunately, we're in a situation where that hasn't happened, and unless we take action, those buildings could well come down, or we'd be faced with a gap in the gore and perhaps another parking lot, Mr. Mayor. Real concern.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ferguson? I'm sorry, Counselor Collins is next. Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly agree with the previous two speakers. You know, as you know, and all of us know around this table, we've made great strides, not just across the city, but in the heart of our city downtown. And the last thing we need at this point in time is more wrecking balls than cranes. And we've celebrated the successes of all the new buildings, and we know how hard and how long we've waited for that sort of rejuvenation to come about. And many of the programs that those developers are using today are programs that we've had in place for almost 10 or 15 years. And so, you can see, even with the incentives that are put in place, how it takes a long time to start seeing even incremental changes occur. I know that in my public and private conversations with Counselor Farr, that he's done everything he can, not just with this situation, but with others, to try to keep that momentum downtown going. And I think all of us would note that Counselor Farr is probably one of the most reasonable and easy people to get along with in terms of trying to find compromise on any issue. And so, I trust his judgment in this regard. If he says tonight that there is a real and present concern that these buildings are going to come down at some point in time without a concrete plan in place, then I trust him when he says that. And I look at others who have made it work under similar circumstances. Friends with Jeff Fezwick, who's done a tremendous job. He has his own personal business, as you know, Mr. Mayor, and he restores as a living heritage buildings, and he's done a tremendous job with Treble Hall. And I know that our housing board actually looked at purchasing Treble Hall. We walked through it as an alternative to the gore and the Kit Kat buildings that we recently completed downtown, and we walked through it with staff. You know, their concern was, "We'll never be able to make this work. It's unaffordable, and probably shouldn't dip our toe in the water on this one." But Mr. Fezwick put his money where his mouth is, and he's made it work, and that building is absolutely beautiful today. And so, I think we see that in addition to others, like Bill Curran, who has an amazing building on James Street North. So, there are clear examples in our city where people have not only the resources, but the expertise, and are willing to take a chance on heritage buildings. Most of us hope that the current owner will lend his resources and his expertise to the buildings that Counselor Farr has referenced here tonight. We cannot afford to have that famous Bobby Clarke smile represent the streetscape in the heart of our city on our main street. That is just something that will hurt us so bad in that we've not only focused on the heritage issues, which I think Counselor Farr appropriately referenced here tonight, but think of the image issue that we have to go through now. When we see the wrecking ball come in, and we see these structures come down, it was referenced tonight by Counselor Farr, the 20 Jackson issue. It's come down, and apparently there is no plan right now to replace it. And we could say, "Well, that doesn't have any heritage value." But I'll tell you what kind of value it has. It has assessment value. And we asked, I asked Counselor Farr today to ask finance staff, and they'll estimate, and they'll tell you, that that 20 Jackson building was paying $77,667 when it was a building and it was occupied. It is now, or will probably pay, between $5,000 and $7,000. So, start to do the math, and when you start to see the buildings come down, you start to see the tax assessment that we lose, and we know how hard it is to get that back in any area of the city, let alone downtown. So, those are my comments. I'm completely supportive of what Counselor Farr is doing here tonight. I commend him, again, as he has with other issues, for taking a very proactive approach rather than just waiting for things to happen. The motion here tonight, I think, speaks volumes to his work ethic, and I'm happy to second the motion if he doesn't have a seconder at this point in time.
Okay. Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I applaud Counselor Farr for trying to preserve our heritage buildings. And I recall that Counselor Farr, along with Counselor McCarty, met with the developer and came back to us and said that two of the buildings are not salvageable, is what we were told, and therefore, the building permit would be reasonable for those, and another two, I believe, is 24 and 28. 24 to 28 could proceed with demolition, and the other two, they would revoke the demolition permit. I may got those turned around. But there was two buildings that were not salvageable in the views of Counselor Farr and Counselor McCarty, and I believe in conjunction with staff, but the other two were. And the developer agreed to that. I don't know what's happened, but the only thing that worries me is that I just want to make sure we're not playing fast and loose with the heritage designation, because I sit on the Heritage Committee, and it's a very complicated process to designate a building. A staff report is prepared, and it comes to the Heritage Committee where it's debated. And then you have the owners engaged, and that comes on to Counsel for final approval. Walking straight on without coming through that process. And just a question, if I can, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Robichaud, our Director of Planning. I've never seen this in the seven years I've been on Counsel. I understand this deal was struck where two could be demolished and two were to be preserved. Can we legally do this, just walk straight on to a council meeting to designate two buildings or four buildings without going through a full staff review?
Mr. Mayor, yes. The Council can proceed to designate the properties without first consulting with the Municipal Heritage Committee?
Or receiving a staff report to spend literally weeks preparing these reports to go through all the details. We can do that without a heritage staff review?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Staff have spent considerable time over the years working on this property, and going back to last year, in terms of the reasons for designation that were reached, that came forward from Heritage Committee to Planning Committee, that was prepared with staff involvement. So, it's not that staff have not been working on these properties or doing some of the work. In addition, in response to some of the discussions with the owner this summer, staff commissioned two separate reports to be done. One was to look at the heritage attributes and the heritage values of these properties, and we provided that report to the owners. And that was an independent consultant's report that came back and said that, yes, these buildings had merit, and there were elements that were worthy of designation. And then we did a follow-up report with the owner, and we presented it to the owner, and that's the one that looked at the alternative costing scenarios, whether it would be to dismantle the front, designate it, dismantle the facades and then reassemble them, versus the alternative would be to preserve those facades in place, you know, through structural steel and reinforcing them, and looking at the cost comparisons between those two. And we provided that information to the owner, which was, I think, as Counselor Farr indicated, was earlier this year, and was sort of led to the meetings and the discussions about the various city programs and making incentives under the designation programs to help offset the costs for the preservation of those front facades.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, again. What happened in the last few months? Because, you know, you went in there with our staff and determined that two buildings were not salvageable. Maybe the facade was, but there was an agreement that came back to Counsel, and I get the qualifier at this time, that two of them would be preserved. I think it was 18 to 22, that the building, that the demolition permits be revoked, and the other two could proceed. What changed in the last couple of months?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's staff have not changed their position. I mean, those were discussions with the applicant, but it was always staff's position, feeling that those buildings were worthy of designation, and preserving and managing change of those heritage attributes of the buildings. I believe it was discussions that occurred with the applicant as to what would be the alternatives that could occur, but staff were always of the opinion that those three properties were worthy of designation.
Okay. And then through you, Mr. McCant, to Counselor Farr. What changed? From when you came to us a few months ago, when you said two could be demolished and two would be retained? What's triggered this resolution, then? Has the developer done a 180 degrees on you, or?
Counselor, I think you get the question. What's the answer? First off, I think it was well more than a few months ago. Ideas changed with respect to the owners of the property, concepts. Consultation led to different paths. Every month or so, it seemed like a new chapter, specifically to the original mandate, which was save 22, 18, okay, 24, 28. The whole conversation was around a greater good, a bigger development that brought residences, that brought jobs, that brought growth, that spoke to our plans and the Planning Act, that was far, far away from moratorium on new surface parking, not suggesting that that's the outcome here if we don't move tonight. I didn't reference 20 Jackson, someone else did, but the point is, the conversation then, and it was a conversation, led to bringing forward a compromise that was well-publicized and well-talked about and well-debated, and received all sorts of input. A lot of heritage folks didn't like that compromise, but it was a compromise, and we stuck to it. And when I say "we," both myself and the other side, the owners, that changed. And why specifically? You might want to ask them, but the point is, it changed actually and evolved to, in my recollection, preserving all of the facades. And in fact, at one point, there was even a conversation of bringing back that one gap that's there now, that one missing two, and bringing that back, at least restoring that look. You know, there was a great conversation for a while there, but you know what? I'm afraid, Counselor Ferguson, that those conversations just aren't happening anymore. I mean, I was elated to find that we had the ability, working with Glenn and other staff, to bring forward a motion that we passed unanimously here tonight, to have a conditional approval on our incentives based on a heritage designation, mind you, for a lot of it, at $1.1 million. And trust me, the last meeting I had with staff and these folks in the room, I'm not going to reiterate verbatim the conversation, but it revolved around, and you can ask either Megan or Steve, or both, who are here tonight, and again, I appreciate them being here, there was this feeling that we've finally made some progress, that everybody in the room felt, if we can get this conditional approval, the difference is X. And we think, it sounded like they thought they could make that work. And a conversation I had probably about a week ago with one of the consortium, I unfortunately kind of walked away completely deflated, that over a year's worth of bringing people together unfortunately has led to this only option, the urgency that we have tonight. And I can only say, being a half-full glass guy, that I still have a lot of confidence. I've dealt with them long enough that we can still just take a different road, but get to, in the end, something that would be remarkable for not only their pockets, but for the good of all of us here in the city of Hamilton.
So, I'm sensing that they want to use this resolution, then, as a stick to go back to them and ask them to do what they said they were going to do. Because my fear, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, Hamilton is, as they say, beyond the cusp. It's got a big uptake, lots of cranes going, and we want to keep that momentum going. And I'm worried that if we take this unilateral action, it spooks off investors, holy smokes. They can do that, and hook me to a full stop after I make an investment. That would make it serve me as an investor. But if they're not doing what they said they're going to do, that may play the other way, and I guess we have to weigh that in our minds. And so, through you again to Steve. Steve, so what's the next steps? It says intent to designate. So, then the process starts where staff will do their report, get it to Heritage Committee, bring it on to Counsel. Is that same process still work?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No. What would happen next if Counsel decides to proceed with this is, we're required to give notice to the owner, as well as the Ontario Heritage Trust, and publish notice in the newspaper of Counsel's intent to designate the property. And if there's no appeals within 30 days, then the designation would take effect. Alternatively, if the owner objects to that designation, then it would be... The Conservation Review Board would schedule a hearing and determine and make a recommendation back to Counsel on the merits of whether or not to proceed with that designation, but that would be Counsel's decision at that point whether or not to proceed with the designation of the property. And what would happen, though, is once the notice of intent to designate is served, in accordance with the Heritage Act, the demolition permits or the building permits are null and void until such time as either Counsel decides not to designate it, or alternatively, the applicant would have the option of applying for a heritage permit for the demolition or the alteration of the buildings.
So, both demolition permits are alive and well for all four locations? This would rescind them, then?
Once the notice of intent to designate is given, any existing demolition permits are void. That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Pearson, Marula Clark Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was my question. I appreciate Mr. Robichaud clarifying, because that's where I want to know where we... I appreciate Mr. Robichaud clarifying, because that's where I want to know where we sat because of the demolition permit. I don't want to see that, you know, we have a 30-day process on here, they have a demolition permit in hand, we see something happen over the Christmas holidays. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Powers?
Sorry, but so councillor Farr, I will support your impassioned plea for this. The only reason I voted against waiving the rules, we had a six-page document drop on the blotter tonight in a cluster of paper. Sure, give us a heads up if you're intending to do this in the future, please. So anyway, I support the intention of the ward councillor and his and other councillors' efforts to preserve the downtown. Just a question through you once again to Mr. Robichaud is, the clock doesn't stop, in other words, the demolition, if approval of this is given granted tonight, then the demolition permits are deemed to be null and void, and therefore, a whole new process starts, not a new clock starts?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that would be correct. Once the notice of intent to designate is given to the owner and published in the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera, the demolition permits are null and void. The owner can challenge council's intent to designate, but while that challenge is occurring, those permits are still null and void.
And therefore, they, said something, Mr. Mayor? Then they would have to make new application for demolition permits if that's indeed their intentions, and therefore, the clock would start anew. It doesn't take into consideration already utilized time, it would allow, it would require the complete process to start anew.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Once the designation is in effect, the first step would be for the owner to apply for a heritage permit to either alter or demolish the building. And if it's for demolition, then that heritage permit would go from the Heritage Committee to Planning Committee and then to council to make a determination on. And if council decides to issue the heritage permit for the demolition of the buildings, then they can apply to the building department for a new demolition permit.
Councillor Marula.
Mr. Mayor, I too am strongly supporting what's before us. I find it remarkable that, and having been privileged enough to travel throughout Europe and seeing how they preserve their historical buildings over the years, it's really unfortunate that we in the past have taken steps to not preserve what little history we do have. And I even look at this building we're in here now. I can recall just a decade ago, or just maybe a little longer, they were proposing to demolish this building and it was only 40 some odd years old. And this mindset of disposable buildings, I think is dangerous not only for our present culture, but obviously for our future culture. And I look at these buildings, I think these buildings are the gore, and I can recall even as a child looking at them, always being a little bit marveled by their look, their Victorian look. And I think those buildings are good, not because they're old, but they're old because they're good, in that they have some structural integrity that is compared to nothing, I think. So things that we can do to assist in facilitating what councillor Farr and McCarty and I know others are advocating, I strongly support. But I think I'm saddened sometimes that the easy route or the path of least resistance, and that normally is to demolish and rebuild, is normally what is the first priority rather than a collective intent to try to preserve what I believe to be important, so not only today, but in the future as well. And I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, councillor Clark.
Couple of quick questions. I heard staff indicate that they had commissioned two reports. Who, what reports were they?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The first report was on the, looking at the heritage attributes of the building to determine whether or not they would be worthy of designation. And then the second report was to look at the costing scenarios of what it would cost to preserve the front facades in place, since, you know, doing with structural steel reinforcement versus a disassembly of those front facades and then a reassembly at a later point in time.
And the cost for those reports, do you know roughly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately $20,000 to $25,000 was for the consulting costs to do those two reports.
Okay. And the costing on the facade renovation on the front? You indicated the second report was the costing on that. What was the projected cost for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To preserve the facades and then restore the facades to incorporate them into a new building, the estimate was 1.5 million dollars.
Quick question for, and I'm assuming it was councillor Farr that was doing all the negotiating, so I don't know whether staff were with him or that he was doing it on his own. The 1.1 million dollars, how was that figure arrived at? I don't know who came up with the figure, so if it was you, then I guess I'm asking you.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. The incentive programs is the 1.1 million dollars. That was a result of a program change earlier this year that allowed it to go from being property, from a property to municipal address. And then through the urban renewal section, when they looked at all of the programs that were available, including for the heritage grant, for the designated heritage grant restoration programs, that's how it totaled 1.1 million dollars would be the total amount of money that would be eligible for a designate, for those five designated municipal addresses.
And why did the developer walk away from the 1.1 million when it's only a $400,000 difference in terms of the total cost for his facade? Why did he walk away? Does anyone know? Councillor Farr?
Question, I just had this handed to me.
Why did the developer walk away from a 1.1 million dollar incentive offer when it looks like his projected cost was only 1.5 million, so it's a variance of 400,000?
I can't speak, it's a great question. I can't speak for the developer and I don't know if I want to use the term even, they walked away. I am only, I can only say, and I think fairly, that I'm discouraged that the conversation and almost always the conversation was with urban renewal staff, Steve, heritage planners, the gamut, our chief building official, sometimes councillor McCarty, communications, Mike Kropopolis, there was always a number, this is a key, a significant, significant issue. And so I always tried to bring as many people together and oftentimes they met on their own without me on the latter part. But to your question, there was one meeting that I did sit in and many of the staff were there and two representatives of the consortium, the ownership group, were there. And we offered this estimate, the cost scenario, and I think it's safe to say, I know I felt and many people felt, and Steve and I were having to talk about this earlier, very confident that, you know, we were going to make it work. They left us feeling like the difference now, that council approved changing from deed to address, making it a lot more attractive. All of those things that happened and 1.1 million was a fair estimate. And you really had this sense that it would work, that it could work. Then we moved to GIC last week and we approved unanimously and proved it here again tonight, the 1.1. And between tonight and last week, I get word, and it's well publicized, actually, I believe in the media, I believe it was the spec, it may be CBC, I'm not sure, where one member of the consortium kind of left us with the impression through a quote, that that still doesn't work. And that's just, that was just deflating enough. And then a conversation with another member of the consortium that I had quickly over the phone not long ago, about a week ago, that revolved around totally different focus altogether after over a year's worth of conversations that tried to search and seek a compromise that really went in the opposite direction leads us to tonight.
And so it's your feeling that this stick is going to fix that? Why wouldn't we continue to having the discussions with them?
I don't know what else to discuss. It's been going on, this truly is the last opportunity. My sense is councillor, and I appreciate the questions, because this is not easy, probably not easy for you, not easy for me, not easy for anybody. I mean, this is, this is a precedent-setting moment here for this council. I don't believe we've ever been in this position before. I've asked around.
Hope not in it again.
And so I would say to you that...
Through the chair.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that we're at a point here where if we don't act tonight, we have a demolition permit for half of the buildings we're talking about in the heart of our city that expires, half of them, by mid-January, mid to late January. And there's no other opportunity. And it is quite potentially, I feel, after all this consultation, that that's where we're headed.
Question for our staff. Let's assume that this document is passed and we put in place the designation. What stops the developer from just walking away with his hands in the air, puts the project up for sale and leaves Hamilton?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is possible. He could just simply walk away from the properties and then they would just be subject to the normal property standards bylaws and that he would essentially, he has no, he has not made any development applications, he has not come in for a formal consultation. There has been a development concept sort of presented to staff, but it is not advanced to either a formal consultation or a site plan submission. But you are correct, the owner could simply just mothball or shelve all of their plans for the property and just let it stay as is.
Some, just some quick comments. The process on how this is worked through, I agree with councillor Farr, it's unprecedented and I really hope we don't go down this road again, just start negotiating with developers on incentives and you're not even sure whether or not the developer is really supportive of heritage in any way, shape or form. To have a situation where now 12 months or perhaps even 18 months later, I can't recall exactly, where we now come in with the designation, it just looks like we're supposed to be bargaining in good faith, trying to come up with a solution to the problem and whether they interpret it to all of the developer friends that since we didn't get away, we brought in the heavy hand of the Heritage Act, or whether they come up with some other spin, they're going to walk out of the city of Hamilton, not saying that the good thing is about Hamilton, but they wasted their time for a year and a half trying to get a development underway and this was the outcome. That's not good spin no matter what. And candidly, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're actually going to get a redeveloped heritage building. The guy can sit there and we've seen it happen before, where properties just dilapitate over time because they're not interested in the Heritage Act and they're not interested in saving the money, so they'd rather have the building fall down around them before they touch it. And we've seen that happen far too often in this community. So yeah, it's not a great situation all around. I have real concerns about at the last minute throwing the switch when we're negotiating throughout the process.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've probably been one of those that have real reservations about the government stepping in and using sticks when it's not necessary, especially when it comes to the heritage issue. But there's an evolution since I've been on council and understanding, and I got some very important heritage buildings in my own ward and certainly I've been educated by the historic society, so I know and getting to appreciate more and more the value of those facilities in our community. But having said that, you have to balance that with the financial interest and investment. When I picked up the paper and looked at how many fires need to be put out and councillor Farr was there relative to the community outcry and concern in this particular area, my hat goes off to councillor Farr on a very, very difficult file. I guess my biggest concern is a number of years ago, and you know, when we sit around this table and we look at issues within our wards, it's not uncommon that we come here and look for different tools, whether it's financial or bylaw changes or whatever the tool might be to get the desired result we want in our wards. That's what we do. So currently councillor Farr is here in front of us, making a request based on, and I often look at it as somebody that is very, being very close to the action, you know, like a judge listening to all the evidence and then having somebody else trying to make the decision that didn't hear all the evidence and wasn't there for all the discussions. Well, councillor Farr has been part of all these discussions. No one has a better flavor of what is taking place and what's transpiring than the ward councillor on this issue. So the other concern I have is, and I remember, you know, just stepping out that backyard and watching the building over here on Jackson Street come down, and I know that the big issue since I've been elected in 2003 was buildings coming down to abandon their responsibility on taxes, just basically to get away from paying taxes. No site plans, no development plans and conversion into parking lots. And we did implement a bylaw, quite frankly, try and address that issue. But it's concerning that the same operator who just did this on Jackson Street is also the one who's dealing with these properties that are at issue here before us here tonight. I think timing is what, this is the last council meeting before, well, of this year. And so time is very tight. So this is really the very last opportunity for councillor Farr to look at an alternative leverage to try and preserve the, get the desired outcome of preserving the facades on those desired buildings. So for those reasons, I don't know why anyone, anyone around this table would begrudge the good ward councillor doing what each and every one of us try to do every day in our wards. So I will be supporting this motion.
Councillor Johnson, if you'd kindly take the chair.
Yes, sir. Order.
What we have right now is an eyesore. We've got, I've never seen the gore decorated as beautifully by our city public work staff because we had the Christmas tree lighting on Friday. It looks spectacular, except on the south side between Houston and James, we've got this big nightmare of an eyesore that's going to last probably, I don't know, two through the Pan Am's. Anybody see anything happening there before that? So I guess my first question is, what would the requirement be now if the development followed through with our plan? Can they continue to occupy the street with that screening, that's the demolition fence? And what do they do about the portions below the upper facades that were ripped open and exposed to the public? Would they be required to plywood them up, as much as I hate to use the word plywood for the downtown? So what do we do about the eyesore in view of the fact that it seems we'll be going down this route?
And Mr. Mayor, were you directing that at?
At anyone on staff who wishes to answer.
So what do we do about the windows and plywood?
The whole thing, the street occupying part of the street. That's what I said.
Through you, deputy mayor, to the mayor, there is the, under the property standards bylaw, there's special provisions for designated buildings in terms of ensuring that they are maintained in a safe condition and that they would have to be sort of stabilized and restored to a safe condition. We would have to work with the owner in terms of moving forward with those plans to get it into that sort of stabilized, safe condition situation.
So my, again, on the fencing that protects from the demolition, that's occupying the street now, the sidewalk is blocked by that. Would they be required to remove that until such time as whatever the next step is? Can they continue to occupy that part of the street, do you know?
Steve?
Through you, through the deputy mayor. The, once the buildings were being, right now the fencing is because it is not a safe condition and impending demolition, but to my understanding that once they would be restored to a safe condition, then that fencing would no longer, may no longer be required. So that would then reopen up the sidewalk and eliminate the pedestrian barrier.
Mr. Mayor?
Council needs to understand, I heard this rumor maybe two years ago, that a project was going to take place. And I said to the people who were telling me this, well, that's pre-confederation facade, they'll have to go through the heritage. So I thought. And then there were grandiose plans, it would be in else shape because the property goes back and then goes over onto James Street and there was going to be this big commercial mixed-use building. And so I spoke to the councillor, I don't know, better part of a year ago, discussing because we've had these issues in Ward Two all along with many different things. My suggestion was get a definite answer, because if we're going to go through the issue of taking down a pre-confederation building, there better be a really good excuse for it, you know? And I'm not willing to sacrifice our heritage, but you have to look at proposals. So I guess we never got a picture of what was going to go there. It was just this sort of nuanced... It was just this sort of nuanced discussion. So we, and the other piece of this is the Downtown BIA, because those people must be involved, I believe Wilson Blanchard are part of the Downtown BIA. And here we had, we've lost at least two and maybe three businesses, for one reason, because they removed the parking, which is temporary, and once we're ready to go and move ahead with the Gore renovation, it'll be pedestrianized. But in the meantime, these businesses, Mahalls and the other little restaurant that was beside it, they're desperate for their parking. So what happens is, the parking goes, and then they tear down Jackson, 20 Jackson and make a new parking lot. So instead of our metered parking rates, there's, those people are driven onto someone's parking lot. And I guess the most disappointing thing for me is that we don't have a clear, simple answer yet as to whether they're in violation of the bylaw that was created after the bank, I guess, was torn down beside the Picket Building. You can't do that. And then there's something about 300 meters, well, I think Yale Properties is within 300 meters of that, but they weren't permitted to park on it. So I'll ask this question. When can we get the answer on whether they're allowed legally to park on the 20 Jackson site? Because if they are, that's what we're going to end up with, a parking lot on the famous Bobby Clark smile.
Steve, do you want to answer that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through the Deputy Mayor to the Mayor. Under the zoning by law 05200, the use of the 20 Jackson Street for a surface parking lot is not permitted.
Not.
It is not permitted. Any parking that was previously, previously on that property would have been accessory to a use, that would have been the building. Once that building ceased being there, then that accessory parking ceases to be a permitted use. So the only permitted use on that property right now would be nothing until such time as they come back with a new building for that property.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm done.
Thank you. Can you add to, Councillor Clark, Councillor Clark to the list, please?
Councillor? I have Councillor Pearson second time, first time, and then Councillor Clark. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know lots have been, has been said, and certainly I agree with Councillor Powers that stated earlier. The reason for voting against the lifting of this earlier tonight is because it's just been thrown on our blotters. And I know, in all fairness to Councillor Farr, he did kind of try and rush in and give information this evening, but I really would have appreciated something that gave us a more, sort of a historical context of what's happened on here, even by email, whatever. So at least we walked in with eyes wide open tonight of what's going on. And I recognize he's done a tremendous amount of work, and yes, we'd like to preserve this. So I will support this motion this evening. But I do want to ask through you to, Steve, if I can, with regards to the process tonight, we proved this tonight. You mentioned earlier that it has to be advertised. Would we tonight, if we support it, would it be a matter of being able to hand the developer the notification that this has passed tonight so we know for sure that nothing could happen over the weekend? Because I'm terrified to think that you're saying this has to be advertised. I mean, he may not see it, it could go in the paper whenever, it could be a couple days before it's processed, and we have, we still have that limbo time. To you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's three parts to the notification process. We have to serve notice to the owner, so we would delete either by mail or by delivering it to the owner. We have to serve notice to the Ontario Heritage Trust, and we also have to give notice in the newspaper. So we will put an advertisement in The Spectator as soon as possible, but no later than Friday. And then we will undertake to provide notice to the Heritage Trust and to the owner tomorrow.
Thank you for that answer, Mr. Mayor. I certainly feel much more comfortable, at least we're putting in a safeguard, and whatever happens, we know we've done everything we can at this point this evening. And my comments again to Councillor Farr, who has worked so very hard on this, and yes, I think you had us all excited that something positive was going to happen here. And I can imagine, knowing how we probably all feel around here, I can imagine it being triple, you know, 15 times the effect on you as far as being deflated that you weren't successful in getting something positive here. But we aren't at a dead end yet, so thank you.
Thanks, councillor. And Councillor Clark with the final word.
Thank you. Just asked Councillor Farr, wasn't this item brought to planning for the very first time, way, quite a long time ago now?
Councillor?
Yes.
So, and, but we didn't vote to designate heritage at the time, because no one was jumping up and down advocating for it at the time.
January, third week, January 23rd, this motion. And I want to say it went to GIC. I'm not certain if it started in planning, but everyone had a chance to see it, and everyone supported it. And nothing ever came of it from the other side. But that was the one where, as per section of the building code, the permit holder requested in writing that the demolition of 1822, Councillor Ferguson referred to this earlier too, 1822, that's the Kirk Building to the west of the four that you see there now. Requesting writing that the demolition permit for this address be revoked. We asked for it to be revoked. And under that condition, council agreed that once the permit has been revoked at 1822 King Street East, that those addresses would be placed on the Municipal Registry of Property of Cultural Heritage Value or Interest. Long, long after that, since this councillor's endorsed every other property but these and the gore are now on that registry. Just another chapter in this saga, by the way. And then the third part of the motion, Councillor Clark, was that City Council agrees not to designate 1822, 24 and 28 King Street East at this time. Basically, what this said is revoke, pull half that project, that demo project out, and council says okay to those two buildings to the east side. And for the greater good and a compromise in the project and all of that. On February 5th, Wilson Blanchard, quote, "We are pleased to advise that as a result of our engineering investigation, we are now prepared to revoke permit, number, 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 DP immediately upon receipt of a partial demolition permit for the rear of 1822 King Street East. We will be leaving the front facade and approximately the first 40 feet of the building. We will submit the necessary application and supporting documentation as soon as possible." Unfortunately...
A lot has happened since then.
Yes.
My point is, for anyone in the community that's been pointing fingers at you, who jumped through hoops numerous times, there was nobody at the time jumping up and down saying we should designate everything. We didn't have it here, there was no com, there, I remember the meeting very well because it was like, okay, this all makes sense, and this is, all the ducks are lined up and off we went. It was after that, all of a sudden, where people started speaking up. So there was no one around this table that was crying out for it at that time, so you did what you thought you had to do at that time. And as you have all the way through, trying to rectify a problem which has just gone on and on and on like a bad soap opera. So I do want to acknowledge your efforts through this process. I would have been incredibly frustrated with it.
Just briefly, Councillor Johnson, take the chair again.
Absolutely.
My concern about partial demolitions is that something unfortunate happens and the building department issues an emergency demolition because the building is starting to waver. And we saw the Thomas Building, I think, or one of the buildings on King William Street, it just fell down in the middle of the night, sort of thing. So, so I think, I feel much more secure following this approach rather than what's been discussed, that's the past. So I'll take the chair back, and since we have a mover and a secondary, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Members of council, are there any other notices of motion? Hearing now? Oh.
I haven't, it's just a notice of motion, I'm not asking to waive the rules. And it's before everybody reimburses costs associated with appraisal report on 777 Gardner Road East, and I want to thank Mike Ziegler because he said we can accrue it so we can deal with it in the new year.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, high ends of interest. Who'd like to start? Councillor Clark, do you have any of interest?
I just want to wish all the residents in my community, both in Lower Stony Creek and in Upper Stony Creek, a very Merry Christmas and a blessed season. And I want to thank the, I guess it was about 8,000 people that braved the cold, and it was cold on the Santa Claus weekend. It was a great parade, biggest one ever, but they were cold. I think I was frozen to my seat by the time I got back to the beginning. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, I'd also like to, first and foremost, mention about the Stony Creek Santa Claus Parade on Saturday. It was the largest, 86 entries, 13 bands, and the crowd was just phenomenal. Certainly enjoyed it very, very much. And I just want to extend thanks to the volunteers who work very hard to put it all together every year. And I know being involved in the past and hopefully future with the Canada Flag Day Parade, what goes into putting a parade together. And fundraising, providing funding for the bands, because they actually do cost the coordinators in order to get these bands in. And I don't know what Burlington Teen Tour Band is at now, but it's well over $3,000 entry. So it is big dollars, and they put on an absolutely phenomenal parade. And I'm going to just mention too, that you'll see something a little bit different. I think it's probably the first time in the, in the Santa Claus Parade that it happened. We had a little bit of a glitch, the committee members had a bit of a glitch with the wedding that had gotten scheduled by mistake at the same time of the wedding, at the parade, right in, the church is right on King Street, right in the middle of the parade. So what happened is, they actually, when they, they finished the wedding service, they allowed the bride and groom to drive through the parade before Santa. So apparently they're providing them with the DVD of the event that they can put in their wedding album. So it was great. And again, that was another thing that the coordinators had to, you know, scramble and make sure, and they did their very best to help to get the family members all in into the church parking lot that usually is taken up by, by people coming to see the parades. But it all came off great, and again, it was excellent. I also want to mention that the Stony Creek Food Bank, I had a chance to talk to Will Rogers today there, and he certainly sends along that I want to mention, thanks to everyone, to all the residents, not only throughout the year, but through the parade, that contributed donations of food and toys to the Stony Creek Food Bank this year. They're very, very thankful for that. And last but not least, a couple of things. Don't forget the elderly this season. I try my very best to visit shut-ins around the holiday season, take a couple of goodies, whatever, just sit with them for a little bit, and they really appreciate it. It doesn't take along a lot to get some appreciation, and just knowing that you're, you're watching them or you're, you're keeping an eye on them is a big thing for seniors. Not just the snow shoveling, but making sure they're okay. So, sorry, had to throw that in. But again, and then, and lastly, Merry Christmas to everyone. I wish everyone a very safe and happy new year, and all the best in the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Christmas has come to the Early Museum. On the 14th, we're having an open house and caroling. On the 17th, the Glanbrook Home Support is having their annual Christmas open house, and it's from 1 to 4. And Dr. Lally from Mount Hope is actually not leaving Mount Hope, she's actually just relocated next door. So she's now at 3055 Homestead Drive. She's hoping to include chiropractor and massage therapist. So I just want to put a plug in there for keeping our, our family doctor in the home, in the village of, of Mount Hope. And also, I remember the last council meeting I talked about, the Bulldogs coming to the Glanbrook Arena and having a fundraiser. For the first hour, they did their practice, and the second hour, the kids were able to go on. And this was to raise money for the Last family, for Mr. Last, who was killed by a drunk driver on, on Highway 56. And it was so heartwarming to watch little kids walk in, and there was a family of three, and the kids each had a $20 bill and put it in the, in the pocket. They, they actually raised thousands of dollars the very first hour they were open. It was just absolutely heartwarming and wonderful. Also, Merry Christmas to everyone in this city, especially Ward 11, and may 2014 be the best ever. Thank you, sir.
Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as my colleagues before me, we had a tree lighting ceremony last Thursday night, and the crowd was just bumper, it was amazing. The whole forecourt of the Old Town Hall was full. And I want to congratulate, Jerry, have you let the guys know, Doug Jones and those guys in the share yard, they did, they did an outstanding job in the decorations this year, and very supportive of the committee, what they want to do, enhancements, and so congratulations to our public work staff. But this, the, we had two new co-chairs for the tree lighting this year, Aaron Gerard and Nancy Benedict. And Nancy Benedict and her husband own FX, they're the people that do the power graphics. They did a Michael Jackson show, they've done the Super Bowl, they've done the Grey Cup. And so they donated, and they still fireworks display this year too. So, put the tree out and it got the top fireworks went off, and the kids were quite excited about that. They also brought in reindeer and sleigh and big antlers for the, for the photo ops for the kids. And then our volunteer fire department brought Santa, couldn't land a sleigh because there's no snow, so they brought him into the fire truck. And our mounted unit was there to hold the crowds back. We had trouble with all the kids, get so excited with Santa, and they just run out on the Wilson Street. But the horses were, stood still despite the sirens and held the kids back, and the fire truck was able to pull up. And Santa did an outstanding job. So it was a good night, a lot of enhancements, and congratulations to Aaron and Nancy and the whole Heritage Days Committee. And just lastly, Merry Christmas, and just get some rest over the holidays.
Right.
And have a happy and healthy new year. Thank you.
I'm nervous about the antlers though, is the deer call still on? Like, I don't want to walk around with antlers. Councillor, Councillor Powers?
I'm going to start off with thanks. I want to extend my thanks to SMT and all the employees of the City of Hamilton for their, SMT for your direction and your assistance to council over the past year, and to all the employees who contribute in a meaningful way to a better quality of life for all the residents of, of Hamilton. Thank you. I want to extend my thanks on behalf of council to our clerk, Rose Caterini, and all the members of our legislative staff. I mean, if it wasn't for their assistance in the direction and keep us on the straight and narrow on that, I don't know where we begin. So to the clerk's department, thank you for everything you do to make our job, well, try to make our jobs that much easier. Merry Christmas to, to everyone, and just in closing, shop downtown Dendes.
Councillor Pasuta?
Thank you, Mayor Bertina. And first of all, I'm going to comment on your green Saskatchewan shirt. Reminds me of my, my roots. My great-grandfather settled Saskatchewan in the 1850s, then my grandfather was born there, and my father was born there. And my mom and dad came to Hamilton in the mid-'40s, settled in Hilliard Street, and then late-'40s moved on to our farm. So I think Saskatchewan, you've got the wheat on your shoulder there where it says the S, symbol of the wheat. So with that, just kind of brought back some memories. Although we didn't, we didn't win, right?
No.
So I'm just going to, we have the, the ARC meetings going on out in the, in West Flamborough area, and they've already had, and this is the West Flamborough Accommodation Review for the schools. Because their schools, their schools are in field, and they're working on that. So there's been meetings at Spencer Valley, Mill Grove, Dr. Seaton, and Beverly Central. And there's another one coming up on January 26th in Greensville School on Harvest Road. So I'd just like to say there's a working group, and the parents have been coming up concerned about the future of the education for their kids, and, and beyond that, we have to think not 10 years down the road, but 50, 60 years down the road. So Karen Turkstra and the working group have been doing an excellent job and look forward to the outcome, but want to make it best for everybody. And I've been sitting in on these meetings, Councillor Partridge sat on the last one at Dr. Seaton School, and just trying to make it right, but it's going to be a bit of a battle, but we're going to work on that. And I don't know if Councillor Jackson's going to comment on this, or Mr. Mayor yourself, the firefighters graduation last Friday up on Stone Church Road where the training center is, there's firefighters graduated, and Jim Kay, our former chief here, they recognized him. It was due time to get recognized, and I like to say, fellow councillor Tom Jackson was a large part of getting that recognition out there. But, you were there along with Chief of Staff Peggy Chapman, and then veiled the, it's got a plaque on the wall, and it's the K Towers. So it's kind of, it was really, it was really good, and enjoyed being there. And of course, coming up on Sunday is the Good Shepherd Christmas Dinner down the Convention Center. Elaine and I have served there for, I think, every year except one, and I look forward to that, serving the less fortunate, and Merry Christmas to everyone and thank you for the opportunity to serve on council.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just very quickly, this Friday night, I have the pleasure of attending the Muslim Women's Council in Hamilton, their special festivities of celebration. I'll be attending that with MPP Monique Taylor, and, and certainly look forward to that. And then bright and early Saturday morning, the Mill Grove Kin Club at the Mill Grove Community Center will be hosting Christmas breakfast with Santa, and I understand, Mr. Mayor, you'll be attending that as well. And that's the good folks of Mill Grove, so I'm looking forward to that. And then in the afternoon, I'll be heading over to join Santa for the Water Down Food Bank, and that will be at Sobies Plaza. Last week, we were at Fortino's Plaza on Saturday afternoon, and... Last week, we were at Fortino's Plaza on Saturday afternoon, and Attridge Bus Lines donated a bus, school bus, which we parked in front of Fortino's, and we filled with food.
Wow.
And I have never seen so many turkeys and hams and fresh meat. It was absolutely fabulous, and many of the young kids were helping out as well. And Merry Christmas to everyone, and just a reminder, it is worth the drive to Flamborough. There's lots of shopping up there. Thank you.
I thought it was Acton. Oh, okay. Counselor, wait it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think it's only appropriate, a poem that arrived at my door, I'm going to read it because it's appropriate this time. As the wind blew and the snow glistened, the city council started to listen. We are all gathered here to find Santa's eight tiny little reindeer. Just a minute, a notice just been handed to me stating that the eight tiny little reindeer went to sea. The Hampton Bulldog game in and out of the snow, they could be heard yelling, "Go Bulldogs, go." Anyway, that's a good little advertisement for the Bulldogs, Mr. Mayor, appropriate around Christmas.
Fool me once.
I have a couple, I got a couple announcements. I have a breakfast tomorrow morning at the Holbrook, at Holbrook School. And this Saturday, once again, I'm holding my constituency day at West Cliff Mall from 12 o'clock to 3:00 PM, and look forward to meeting all the constituents there. And again, I want to say a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday and safe holiday season to all staff of the city, the outstanding performance and the work that they do on behalf of the community and the taxpayers. And I wanted to say thank you to my colleagues. I firmly believe and really enjoy, in the last number of years, each and every one of you, and the reason why, because each and every one of you bring a certain strength to this table that makes and brings value to the discussion, the debate, and no one's left behind as a result of what you represent. So Merry Christmas to all of you as well. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor DeWolff.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I don't have no well-signed out poem to give you. That's for sure, sure, but anyways, Mr. Mayor, in the last couple of weeks, we've had some graffiti that was taken up on concession, and we had, was all over the buildings. Every building was tagged with different tags, and it was just, you know, it looks like it was just raided. But I made an announcement for the public to send me pictures if they could, when they see this type of tagging, and we would send it into the police. And one resident up in concession did. He sent me about nineteen pictures, and I sent them into our crime manager, and within one week, they arrested two people, caught them in another area doing the same type of tagging. So it does work when you actually send these photos in. So thank you to the Hamilton Police Services, and thank you to the resident. And, Mr. Mayor, Brewville Park, and I made an announcement here, the last council meeting, when it was set on fire, the park was, and the police have handed over to the arson squad. So our staff has done a great job, and we're hoping that it'll be completed by the end of next week, whether permitting, and then the kids can have them play there. I have one more announcement at 580 Lymerich, Mr. Mayor, it was a City Hamilton Housing Project, where the children there had nothing to play with, there was just no kind of recreation facilities for them. And in partnership with Hamilton Housing and myself, we managed to get up enough funds, and now they have an all-purpose court and a playground, and they're just thrilled, and they've asked me to say thanks, thanks to you, the City of Hamilton and our council, for helping them out and getting this.
Great.
Thank you to our City Hamilton staff also.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Merry Christmas to everybody, happy holidays to all the citizens of Hamilton, our staff, and my colleagues. I won't say it because Terry was giving me a tear in my eye when he said it, it was all nicely, so, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of quick announcements. One of the best volunteers we have in Hamilton happens to reside on Hamilton Mountain, Kathy Archer, her Mountain Kids Club. This woman just gives, 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 never expects anything in return. On Saturday, December 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, in Counselor DeWolff's ward at the Eastmount Community Center that straddles my ward, the annual Christmas turkey dinner is being put on by her volunteers, serves up to 180 families on the mountain that otherwise would not have a traditional Christmas turkey dinner. That's Saturday, December 21st, 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Eastmount Community Center. Kathy, thank you always on behalf of Counselor DeWolff, Whitehead, and myself for all you do on the mountain. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, this Saturday, Counselor Morelli and I traditionally have attended the McNabb YW Seniors Active Living Center Christmas Annual Luncheon, and that's being this Saturday, December 14th, from 12:30 to 3:00, hosted by Mrs. Jo Brown and her executive, and Liz Pasquale, the executive director. Thank you to them for all their efforts. They usually get over 200 seniors attending this great Christmas luncheon, and that's again at the McNabb YW Seniors Active Living Center on McNabb Street, this Saturday, December 14th, from 12:30 to 3:00. Counselor Morelli and I are hoping to be there again to bring Christmas greens. And, Mr. Mayor, to all the members of the Jewish community in my ward across the city, Happy Hanukkah, and to all other citizens in our community, a very Merry Christmas and a prosperous, healthy 2014 for me, my family, and my office. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Collins.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just a very Merry Christmas to everyone and a Happy New Year.
And Counselor Marula.
Merry Christmas, seasons greetings, and all the best.
And Counselor Farr.
Mr. Mayor, Friday is ARC crawl, Saturday, the Christmas open house at the James Street South District merchants are holding from noon to four. It's going to be a great walk on the south side of James. Sunday's a big sale following mass at St. Lawrence. The Good Shepherd Annual Christmas Dinner is from 3:00 to 5:00 at Convention Center by Carmen's Downtown, an amazing annual event. Grand opening of Stinson School, you had a lot to do with that in the early days, working with Harry Stinson, and it's come a long way since, Mr. Mayor, and it's a wonderful adaptive reuse. And everybody's welcome to drop by on Sunday afternoon to see converted classrooms, a lot of interesting and innovative ideas in terms of the restoration there at that old school on Stinson Street, and I know Harry would welcome every one of you. Ongoing, the holiday carousel and train rides in Gore Park continuing until the 24th, the annual waterfront festival of lights until February 17th, the downtown free on-street parking goes on Christmas Eve everywhere you look. And thanks finally to, we had a great night Friday, lots going on in downtown Hamilton, but the highlight for me was showing up to the Duran Residents' Seniors' Party and knocking off the bucket list. I've knocked two things off the bucket list in the last month and a half at the Ward Two job that I probably should have done years ago in my former career. But when Yuck Yucks opened, I did two minutes of stand-up comedy. That's done, I don't have to dream about it anymore. I performed in front of about 150 seniors with a three-piece jazz band behind me, and I did Fly Me to the Moon. And I was well-received, believe it or not, and it was a great time. Duran Seniors Residents and the seniors there, along with my wife and my eight-year-old son, they really made me feel like something special, and I really needed it on Friday night, so thank you so much. I always look forward to the visits, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Counselor McCady.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Still working on my bucket list, haven't quite had that experience. Just following a theme, great Christmas shopping in Ward One on Friday, Friday night from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM in Westdale Village, is the Winter Wonder Event, and they've had that the last several years. Music, hot chocolate, interactive fire hula hoop. I'm not sure I'm going to try that, but that's Friday night in Westdale Village.
Oh, go ahead.
Put it on the bucket, on the bucket list, yeah. It's just not on the bucket list, I don't know why.
I'll give you five bucks if you do it.
Maybe in Hawaii, that might work, but. And Saturday, Saturday Lock Street BIA, there's a children's holiday play put on by the Northern Lights Theater Company called Santa's Big Sleep. That's Saturday, 1:00 PM, Stanley Avenue Baptist Church. Come down to shop on Lock Street, take the kids to the play. Right afterwards, Stanley Avenue Baptist, 1:00 PM. And then on a more mundane level, still two public meetings, a Ward One next week. On December 16th, 6:00 PM, at the Unitarian Church on Dundurn Street, the two new leash-free parks are being talked about by our Parks Department, Cathedral Park and Stroud Park is a possibility, so that's December 16th at 6:00 PM, Unitarian Church. And lastly, the school board, difficult meeting, is having a meeting about disposition of Prince Philip School in Ainsley Wood, December 17th at 6:00 PM at the school gym. That's one of those tough issues that we're all facing across the city right now, surplus schools, and that'll be a difficult discussion, but the board's having it on December 17th. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick things. The holiday train was so big that CP advises us that the only other two places were in Minnesota and in Calgary, and apparently, we had the largest turnout of those three places which were selected in North America. So thank you. And the Rothsay Avenue people came, they did their own fundraising and food drive as a part of it, so that was great. Everyone, of course, is welcome to join us for the Nelson Mandela Tribute, which will take place on Saturday, beginning at 11:00 AM until 1:00. There's a wonderful picture of Nelson Mandela in our lower foyer, lower lobby, along with a book of condolences. And the Jim Kay event was great with the wonderful Jim Kay Towers, which is right behind the highest promontory on the mountain in Ward Six, which is the landfill in behind, which I've renamed Jackson Heights in honor of the great work of the Counselor.
I won't say it.
It's a high point. And to everyone else, Merry Christmas. Joyeux Noël, Feliz Navidad, Svetom Božič, Kristo Kalodženo, Vesovek Šriant, Froelika Weinachen, Bonne Festa Natale, Hristo Serodi, and I learned this for the folks in Flamborough, Froelik Kerstvist. It's Dutch for Merry Christmas. And to all of you. So, and I also want to say what a night this was with the events surrounding Counselor Morelli. I don't think any of us will ever forget it. Thank you for working together toward that great end. And now, members of council, closed session minutes. Thank you, seconded. All in favor? Bylaws. Counselor Johnson, do you have an amendment to the bill list?
Yes, sir. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Powers, that the bill list for the December 11, 2013 meeting of the council be amended as follows.
Motion on the bill, or any discussion on bills 302, 303, 304, 305, 306, 307, 308, 309, 310, 311, 312, 313, 314, 315, 316, 317, 318, 319, 320, 321, 322, 323, 324, 325. You can't carry it before I say it. And 326. Motion adjourned. Johnson, Pearson, all favor, carried.